All right.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March fourteenth special meeting of the Jersey City Planning Board. If you could, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. Into the Republic of America. Which is standing as one nation under God indivisible. All right. Thank you, everybody. Cam, could I have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes, Chairman. Today is Tuesday, March fourteenth. This is a Jersey Planning Board special meeting with a scheduled five thirty PM start time. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter and posted with the city clerk on March tenth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right. Thanks, Cam. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Acting Vice Chair Youngedin.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Here.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay, we have six commissioners present. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Bridget, can we swear in the stop, please?
Raise your right hands to be sworn. You swear or affirm the testimony or comment you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Cam, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two items at the moment that we are aware of that are carrying to March twenty-first. That is our next regularly scheduled meeting. That would be item nineteen on the agenda. Case number P twenty-three dash zero three zero. It's for a cell antenna and it's at address four sixty grand. They have requested to carry their case to the next regularly scheduled meeting on March twenty-first. Next, we have item twenty-one. They are case number P twenty-two dash one twenty-five. Address is four eighty-one Central Avenue. That is for cannabis dispensary. They are carrying to the next regularly scheduled meeting, March twenty-first as well with preservation of notice. And then we have one item that is carrying into April. So that is item eighteen on the agenda. Address is one fifty-seven Newark Avenue and three twenty-four Barrow Street. Case number P twenty-two dash one six eight. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to April fourth, twenty twenty-three. So those are the carries that we have at this moment.
Okay, we do have one more item that's going to get carried. There was a problem with the data portal.
Yes, Stephen agreed to carry with preservation of notice to the twenty-first.
Okay, so we're going to carry item sixteen is case P two-one dash zero two-three. Is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. That address is two thirty-six to two thirty-eight Academy Street. That's going to be carried to the March twenty-first meeting with preservation of notice. Yeah, there was a problem with the data portal. The plans weren't available on there for review, so we are going to carry that. Cam, do you want to handle adjournments or I forgot how we handled that last week?
Um, we only just mentioned it and asked anyone here from the public that if they see a case listed among the adjournments that they will not be heard tonight and they will in fact be adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting. That is the cases under the adjournments, which is March twenty-first.
Okay. All right. So let's get into new business with that being said. Let's call case P two-two dash one one zero is a preliminary and final major site plan for five eleven Newark Avenue.
Okay. Um, actually, we've got Mr. Wine promoted here and I
Yeah.
Okay, I'm assuming you would like to carry a case.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chairmembers of the board. I I I knew I always listened to the adjournments just to be safe. One of my cases this evening, and I know it was a little late to the game, but it's item twenty-two. That's one oh seven Magnolia. I had, again, it was late to the game. I emailed Cam super late. But if that can be carried to March twenty-first, you know, and an announcement made, just in case there's anybody here, I don't want them sitting around for the next number of hours.
Sure. So we're going to carry item twenty-two is case P two-three dash zero zero eight for C variances. Maybe we can update that list then, Cam, for the next agenda. The address is one oh seven Magnolia Ave. And that will be carried with preservation of notice to the March twenty-first meeting. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shaw. I'll see you shortly for another one.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
And you can demote me as needed.
Okay. Okay, so we're at five eleven Newark Avenue currently. Case P two-two dash one one zero.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Tom Lean from Connell Foley. I just want to start by saying thank you so much for everything you guys do. It's hard enough to work a job every day and then show up to this two times a month, let alone a third time a month. So it's it is extremely appreciated and, you know, I I hope we can try and get through as much of the calendar as we can this evening.
Thank you, counsel.
Before you is a notice case. It is a major site plan. It has been carried a few times. I would ask Mr. Alompi just to confirm that jurisdiction is proper before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Lean. Chairman, I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at five eleven Newark Avenue. This matter has been listed multiple times, but I am in receipt of a affidavit of publication proof of mailing for the February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting. Was carried to tonight's meeting with preservation of that notice, so I find that it does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A one for the record.
Thank you, counsel. The application is a proposed five-story building containing forty efficiency studio units. It is within the neighborhood commercial district. It does front on to Newark Avenue. It is between a portion of the block that is between Pavonia and Newark, but does not have access to Pavonia. It is an as-of-right building. It does comply with all of the requirements of the neighborhood commercial district. We have met with the community multiple times in an effort to try and address some of their concerns. We did enter into a construction access agreement with the neighboring property, which is the existing perch there on Newark Avenue, which would allow for staging and access for construction vehicles. That property does have access to Pavonia and to Newark. Like I said, it is as of right. It complies with the requirements of the zoning. We do only have one witness this evening. Jeffrey Lewis is an architect. However, I do have a professional planner and a traffic expert if you would like to hear from him, even though there is no proposed parking on this site. So with that, I would throw it over to Mr. Lewis.
Hi, Bridget.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you and state the full name for the record, Jeff.
Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I F.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you. You are qualified and go ahead.
Okay, great. So I'm going to bring up my screen and get going with this. So five eleven Newark Avenue. As Thomas mentioned, we are proposing a new five-story building, has forty efficiency units and a ground floor commercial space. We're located at Newark Ave, right at the intersection with Palisades Ave. So here's our property. This is Newark Ave and Palisades coming right into us. You can see it from here as well. This is our property here. Looking at the site plans, on the right here, we have the existing site plan. We do have a one-story building and a shed located on this property that are both going to be demolished. There's also an existing large curb cut on the building, which we are going to be removing. The lot itself is fifty feet wide. It ranges in depth from ninety-six feet to one hundred and eleven feet, excuse me, one hundred and eleven feet on the two sides. And so that creates this angled frontage on Newark Avenue. Looking at what we're proposing on the right, on the left here, excuse me. We are proposing new concrete curbs, new concrete sidewalks, one new street tree. The building itself on our property, we're we're proposing to build the building with a sawtooth pattern to help address that angled property line to the right of the building. We're stepping the building back a little more than three feet for the front half of the building, and this is to provide access to light and air for some existing windows on the property next to us to the right here. And then on the left side, we are building right up on the property line, except we're setting in about three feet on the back half of the building, and that's to provide windows for our building. Lastly, looking at the backyard of our property, we do have a patio and that's all surrounded by lawn and landscape area, all of which is enclosed with a six-foot board-on-board fence. With that, I'm going to jump right into the floor plans. This is the cellar. We actually don't have any basement. That was removed. Looking to the left here, this is our ground floor plan. The left side, we do have our commercial space. It has an ADA bathroom in the back here and it's a total of one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight square feet. To the right is our main residential entry. So you have this large lobby and then this hallway provides access to our meter room, our laundry room, the main staircase, the elevator to the building. We have bicycle storage for twenty-eight bicycles. And then in the back, we have a five hundred and forty-five square foot amenity space and a four hundred and nine square foot fitness room. And each of those two spaces has access directly to that rear yard. Lastly, we have that alley along the front of the building on the right here. And we're using that alley to provide access to our sprinkler room, as the building will be fully sprinkled, our trash and recycling room, and then access to the second stair of the building. Okay, so looking to the right here, this is our typical floor plan. It's floors two, three, four, and five all have the same floor plan. There are ten efficiency apartments on each of these floors, as well as two stairs and a single elevator, which are connected by a central corridor. All of the apartments have electric heat pumps to provide heat and air conditioning, and they are all ADA adaptable apartments. They range in square footage. The smallest is three hundred and one square feet. The largest is three hundred and forty-three square feet. There are four of these apartments in the front, and each of these apartments has an angled balcony that runs along that front property line. Then there are two in the center that have no balconies. And we have four apartments in the back, each of which has a private balcony off of their rear elevation. Looking to the left here, we have our roof plan. We are providing a common roof that will be accessible to all tenants. The roof stack itself is four thousand three hundred and sixty-eight square feet and it's surrounded by both green roof trays and raised planter beds. So the roof is accessed by both stairs and by the elevator. And then lastly, the back half of the roof here is used just for our condensers. Moving on to, this is the front elevation to the building. So we really have two main finishes on our building here. The most prominent that you see is a matte white smooth stucco finish. We're using that for the corners at the top. We're using that for this border around the building as well as the line at every floor level you can see. Then when we have these sawtooth bays that are set back a little bit, we're actually doing a checkerboard pattern where half of them are going to be that same matte white stucco finish and the other half are going to be this ebony of the darker brick. And this is something that you'll see a little bit better in the elevations I'll show you and the rendering. Besides that, we also have the balconies in the front, of course, which have black aluminum railings and glass panes. This is the rear elevation to the building. The finish is just that same matte white smooth stucco finish. We have black frames for all of our windows and the balconies are have black aluminum railings. And then both of the side elevations here, we're just finishing with a smooth stucco finish. And that's actually that's it. We have next, we have a little bit of a close-up where I think you can see a little better the alternating pattern that we have. And then lastly, I just want to go to a closer up of the rendering from the front elevation, which I think shows it the best where you could see how the the building finishes really work here. Okay, and that's actually my presentation. Thank you for your time. I can answer any questions that you have about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I'm going to start off with Commissioner Torres. Eddie, do you want to get in here on the balconies?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Because I I have no questions, but I know you do, so.
Yeah, yeah. And this is the, what I'm looking at now is the front of the building, what you're showing me right now.
Yes, this is the front.
On York Avenue. And we have nothing underneath as far as a canopy or anything from the edge of that balcony to the ground floor with a sidewalk where people are walking. The safety aspects of this 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 these balconies in front of a building, it's not working for me no more. This is like, Billy, this almost looks like a beachfront property. That's the rest of the neighborhood. I just don't know where the beach is at and over here and on York Avenue, but we got about five inches of space between the glass and the balcony floor that I'm looking at right now. Forty-two inch high glass for the balcony? Anything falling, where's it going to land? That comes off of that balcony.
Well, Mr. Lewis, before you address that that you're going to interrupt, Torres, I know this this has come up a couple. And I know you're concerned about. Anything we were to build outside of the facade of this building would require the city council to approve it because it
Yes, yes, but they are, yes, council. I I I'm sorry to interrupt you, but yes, they will approve this because by code. It doesn't say that these are the way the balconies are built. You don't want to build a cesspool. The water will cause damage to the building if you put something to the bottom. So I understand the, I understand the design why we have a space underneath. Anything, you know, I wouldn't even recommend putting a flooredated end to catch the water because all you're doing is leaving for twenty years of some type of damage to the building, you know, on the front of the building by catching all that water in a bathtub such as that big. Me as a plumber, I would even recommend that. I just don't see the safety aspect of something that comes off of somebody's hand and lands on the main sidewalk of York Avenue just for the look of giving somebody a balcony. I mean, it makes, the concept is making no sense to me. I think it's very unsafe. And this design right here, it's it's a proof that you see the space between and and frankly, I bet you you put that as designed by code. I wouldn't even be surprised. So I I don't understand this look in front of this whole, this whole building, in front of the whole building, it's a balcony.
Mr. Lewis, I'm going to let you respond to that, but I do think a reason for for having this space in front of the building is one, I think there was a specific design that the architect and my client were going for. I also think because these are efficiency units, we were trying to give a little bit of outdoor space to people, which I think is very important. I I cannot respond to the design issue about what's going on at the bottom there, but I again, this this does not violate, like you said, it doesn't violate any design standard in the code. It doesn't violate any design standard in our zoning ordinance. So all I can say is, is if there is something that you would pose to try and make this safer as far as that space at the bottom, a height of that railing, I don't believe my client would be opposed to that.
Yes. Right. So if I could just jump in, what I would say is, is first of all, the most it can be is four inches by coast. That would be four inches or less. But the truth is, nobody likes that space. Even the people that live on those balconies don't want things falling out through their balcony. So usually what we end up doing is this is more like, so it looks good for the rendering. Usually they'll put like, it'll have like a, like almost like a wire mesh at the bottom, just to, like a not, not a very thin wire mesh, not like a screen, but like almost like chicken wire almost, where it's water can go through, everything can go through, but like stuff's not going to go through, like the things you have on your deck. Does that make any sense? It's something you can't really see. You can't really show it on a rendering. It's so, it's so low profile.
No, it doesn't. That doesn't make any sense to me because then that's just assuming that somebody is going to put that there or somebody doesn't like it. And ten years from now, you know, that might last a year, but ten years from now, is that still going to be there? No, that doesn't. I I think
Well, the other
I think the architects need to look at this more. Architects need to look at this more when they come with this design and bring it to the board. As not just a cosmetic look of something to to be able to rent or sell the apartment. Let's look at it as a safety matter, too. And right now, those things are not safe to the people that are walking on the public underneath that building. Just not a safe concept to me. And that's what I want to put on the record. I know it's a design to sell an apartment. I saw the safety aspect of it does not work for me. Some kind of canopy, as a I understand if there was a setback in the building and it lands on a rooftop. And it's understandable. When it's a shake landed to the sidewalk, that's very dangerous. Very dangerous.
Right. So now there is I'm sorry, can I just one second? There is another way that we can build it that might actually be preferable to you. What they do is they build those, the um, the glass panes are actually in front and they they come down past the floor itself. So they actually sit right up against the front of that, the front of that floor. So there's zero space. There's zero inches at all. There's no space.
Then how does it drain? Then it becomes a cesspool of water when it rains on. How does they drain?
Then we would have to provide some, then we would have to provide
Yeah, that's what I mean, even as
There will be, but there will be, there will be, it is covered, so there shouldn't be much. It'll only be when we get the driving range in that direction, but we would have to drain it for sure.
It's just that that that's, to me as a plumber, that is causing building damage in the future when you allow something that's going to hold or retain water, two inches of water at every given time that's going to slide into our balcony doors, ruin the living room floor. Yeah, I mean, it's not all the time that that's going to happen, but can it happen? Yes. Just for the cosmetic look of this in front of a building going straight up to a sidewalk, I think we start, we the developers that are coming to Jersey City with this concept in mind to stop looking at this as a selling point, but let's design this as a safety point. These are not safe. When they go straight to the sidewalk below or to a walk area or like in one building that we looked, I looked at, it went to a playground area where people lounge in chairs and the kids play. And all the balconies had the same problem and their stuff can land on the children that are playing below. That is not fair to the families, not fair to the developer, not fair to the city, and it's definitely not safe for anybody. And I think we should look at these things and also in a safe aspect as well when we design this. I like the builder. It looks good. My the next comment I'll make when I cast my vote on it, though, but the design's nice. Safety-wise, it's not. That's that's why I don't want to, I don't want to drag it on. But I think something needs to be done with that big gap underneath that floor there with the planning staff. I think they should and consider it is a very unsafe design. That's all I got to say.
All right. Thanks, Ed. Just to be clear, though, your problem is with the balcony in general, not just the gap, correct?
Right now, my balcony, yeah, yeah, the front of the building with the balconies in front of the building in general, yes, on a face like that. Yes, for this this thing. In general, for the future of all these designs that go to a sidewalk area where people those gaps and balconies are not safe on a when they are flush with the builders straight out to the sidewalk that's below it. Yeah, that's my, my, that's my problem.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. Make sure that it was the entire balcony and not just the the gap underneath the glass.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Lewis, as far as the gap goes, is there any way? So a- as you have that glass on the front, you could extend that glass down and have drainage maybe go to the side where where the separation between balconies is. Have a, you know, a tiny gap just so water can flow through there and would run down in between.
Yeah, there's definitely, yeah, there is a space to do that, and that would be the best way, I think.
Okay. All right. I actually, I do have one question. I I apologize. Engineering comments talks about the street tree in the front blocking the the view of that signal light. Their comment is to remove the tree completely. Is there any workaround that you see?
I don't, Thomas, was that, did we have a second tree that we did remove or was it the one tree that we have? I know we we try, we always try to do as many as we can, of course.
By understanding that this complies with the barter standards where the location of the tree is, the city would have a preferable
I'm sorry, Mr. Lean, you're breaking up for me. I don't know if anybody else is hearing that.
Yeah, I am. I just just started.
I can't hear.
Okay, can you hear me a little bit better if I lean in closer than I can?
Going in and out.
Yeah, it's going in and out a little bit, Tom.
Like this be my internet connection more located to get at? I don't know if you can hear me any better.
It's
If not, I can try and jump on my phone to address this comment.
Yeah, maybe if we could. It's it's tough to hear you being a commissioner, and I can't imagine Bridget trying to
Okay.
deal with that. Yeah, we'll give you one sec here.
Okay, thank you so much.
You got it. No problem.
So if I could just throw some stuff out there while we're at it, we would definitely be willing to work with planning as far as to do something more low-profile if that's what they were looking for. I know we've done kind of like rain gardens and things like that that wouldn't block any signage. I prefer the street tree, of course, but any green we can get, we'd be happy to to give.
Yeah, agree.
We just want to keep in mind, it is a busy, it is a busy street, though, so I don't know how much square foot we want to really take away from the sidewalk here.
Yes.
Give and take we got to do.
I I definitely see engineering's issue. You know what? Let's wait for wait for Tom Lean to come on. I don't want to speak out of turn and and lose a lawsuit for that.
Promoting Tom Lean.
Can everybody hear me better?
We can.
Yes. Okay, good, 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 good. Okay.
So counsel, we were just discussing maybe putting some kind of a a low grounds cover in place of a tree.
I I think my client would absolutely be acceptable to that. As Jeff, I think, was talking about, it is a little bit of a different, difficult area because it's a high-traffic area, but if engineering is willing to work with us on that, that would be a condition of approval we would absolutely agree to. And if they require us to pay the fee and loo for the tree, we can agree to that.
Okay, thank you. Tim, do you Okay, thank you, um, Tim, do you, uh, are you okay with that? Do you wanna work with, uh, Mr. Lewis on an alternate design and maybe coordinate with engineering?
Yeah, that's not an issue.
Okay, we appreciate it, I, I don't wanna throw extra work on your, your plate, I know you're busy. Um, okay, I have no other questions for Mr. Lewis, anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if you could, uh, just stop your screen share there.
Yep.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, counsel, anything else?
I, like I said, I have a planner, I have a traffic engineer, if there are no more questions, um, this is, uh, this is the zoning that's in place, this board has, um, multiple times affirmed that this is the zoning in place. We just went through a revaluation of our master plan, there were no changes made to the NC district that would have affected this project, and accordingly, I have nothing left to submit to the board.
All right, thank you, um, I do have a question that I just wanna confirm, um, I don't know, Tim, maybe I could just pick your brain for a second?
Hmm.
Um, so the the zoning in the NC zone doesn't prohibit unit sizes such as this, correct?
Yes.
And that's not a new, you know, it's a new zoning change that's put in place, correct?
It basically falls upon building code at that point for the size of the unit.
Okay, yeah, but there's nothing in the plan that, that prohibits unit sizes of this nature, correct?
No.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to get that out in the open for everybody, um. So counsel, if there's nothing else, uh, I'm comfortable moving to public comment. Um, of course, you know, if we do have a, a question for, uh, Ms. Worstel, we, uh, we could address that.
That's correct, and I also would be able to, uh, contact Mr. Klein, who is my traffic engineer, who unfortunately couldn't join us for, for this moment, but I could reach out to him to, uh, to get on the call if need be.
Okay, understood, thank you. All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment, if anybody's here from the public, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand, and this is for five eleven Newark Avenue.
And, and, uh, just one second, because I had to jump to my phone, I am gonna go get my, uh, charger to just plug it in, so I can be here to hear all the comments.
Chairman, seeing no members of the public wishing.
Thank you.
Think, I think we did promote.
We do, yeah, we do.
Yeah, Eric Carter, but, um.
Yeah, 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 thank you, um, everyone, I just had a quick question.
One moment, please, he needs to be sworn in, right, uh, Mr.?
Yeah, correct.
Are we waiting?
We do have to swear you in, yeah, let's, uh, let's give.
Wait for Mr. Lean, and then we'll swear the witness in, and he can give his comment.
Okay, he's here, right hand to be sworn, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, state and spell your full name for the record.
So just to be clear, my name is Dermot Ronan, uh, my husband's logged into this Zoom. Um, and Mike, it's not so much a question.
You gotta spell your name.
D E R M O T R O N A N.
Mr. Ronan, good evening, we have three minutes for you, sir.
Um, I just want some clarification in respect to the tree at the front of the property. So if I understand correctly, um, that tree could potentially be removed. And my question is, will a tree be planted elsewhere in lieu of that tree that's being removed?
Um, so there, there was a question from city engineering, uh, we receive reports from city engineering for every application. They have an issue with the street tree blocking the signal. Um, and, you know, knowing the area, I, I understand that's on the downward slope of Newark Ave. Uh, as that tree grows up, sure, it could potentially block that signal. And, um, then, I, I hate to see trees get trimmed for, you know, wires and traffic signals, there's no care taken to the actual shape of the tree at that point, they, they look terrible. Um, so what we're trying to do is have the applicant's architect work with city planning to maybe get a ground cover, um, you know, some kind of a, a grass, um, you know, not a low grass, but Tim, I don't, I don't know if this is what you're envisioning too. Um, you know, some kind of a high grass or a, a native species in there.
Yeah, something that would be almost like a swale in that situation, yeah.
Okay, so, so that would mean no tree to replace the tree that's being removed. My concern is that, well, here in Jersey City, you all see this, we have a lack of canopy. And it's not just for the humans, it's for also the birds that are being.
Agreed.
Removed, so I, I think my point is, when does it stop? When do we, when do we stop losing our canopy? And if a tree cannot be put up on that immediate site, can the city make alternative plans so that that particular developer can plant trees elsewhere, native species hopefully, elsewhere, grass is not gonna do much good for the birds, it's not gonna do much for the eye. Um, and I appreciate the concern regarding the signal, but we, we need to sort of be more thoughtful about just paying somebody, paying the city in lieu and then planting some, for in my opinion, random grass that may or may not be maintained, and they just collect garbage, like lots of properties we see around Jersey City, and I'm gonna halt there, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, yeah, no, I completely agree, um, I would prefer a tree, uh, hopefully we can work something out, a smaller scale tree. Um, but as counsel put on record, I think you put this on record, counsel, um, that if we can't work something out that the applicant would pay for another tree somewhere else, I don't think you would plant another tree, that's not your um, legal responsibility to find another spot for the tree, so you know, we can't require developers to plant trees somewhere else in the city, but we can make them pay for another tree somewhere else in the city. Counsel, did I misspeak, or are you in agreement with that?
I am completely in agreement with that.
Okay.
All right. Can I just clarify one thing? I just wanna say, there's not a tree there now, we were trying to add a tree. I think you thought we were cutting down a tree.
No, we're certainly not.
We would like to plant one, we'd love to plant one, but engineering's saying we can't.
Yeah, yeah, there is no tree there currently, I can testify to that. All right, um, let's continue with public comment, anybody else who'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand, and if you're calling in and you wanna comment on five eleven Newark Avenue, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Chairman, seeing no other member of the public wishing to speak, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, public is closed. Um, Tim, do you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, um, just a couple things, uh, just reminding the board that this is, and has a right application, that does not have, um, variances requested. Um, also that, um, speaking to Commissioner Torres's concerns, um, I myself have been the victim of, uh, things falling off of balconies in Newport. Um, they are usually, the balconies in Newport are not exactly up against the sidewalk, but needless to say, if you go up high enough, stuff drifts. And while as much as I wanna prohibit people from putting in balconies, um, when it comes to whether or not they're legally allowed, do they can? Um, hopefully in the future, um, our building codes can change, so we can prohibit some of these concerns that you have, because I have the same concerns as well, I mean, my daughters were in the car when it was hit by a falling pot from the sky. Um, so I understand your concerns, but unfortunately legally right now, it's very difficult to push uh, these kind of design standards on applicants. Um, but city planning will keep that in mind moving forward.
Okay, thanks, Tim, we appreciate it, and, uh, counsel, if I'm not correct, we have two conditions uh, to work with city staff and engineering on, um, an alternative, an alternative to the street tree, whether we can move the street tree, whether we can find another solution there. And also, uh, work with planning on maybe shifting, as me and Mr. Lewis were speaking about before, um, maybe building those balconies down to the ground, and trying to shift the drainage in between units. So at least we.
Chairman, those are my two understandings, and what I have notes on, and what I, I know that the, uh, the developer is more than willing to do to, uh, get this approval.
Okay, thank you, counsel. All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
Here, I would like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash one one zero, as presented to the board this evening, together with staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair, Commissioner Gangen.
So my comment will be brief, and I wanna echo the same sentiments, um, from my fellow Commissioner, uh, Torres. While I do understand the zoning on the unit size, I still feel, um, that there is a safety issue in regards to the balcony. And, um, with that, my vote is no.
Uh, Commissioner Cruz. You're muted, Commissioner Cruz.
I vote no.
Commissioner Torres.
Let me check my mute, okay, I'm good. Uh, Timothy, thanks for sharing that, um, and I do understand that these, um, they are allowed in the, and these balconies, um, I have two things with this building, though, it looks like, um, doesn't match the area for me with the front of the building, with so much balcony space, it looks more like that earlier, my comment, that it belongs on a beach somewhere, like with a beach font, um, doesn't look like, uh, something that, present, the whole front of the building is just a big balcony, um. With that, I don't like that design, uh, but, um, with the fact that, yes, they can build balconies, um, I don't think we could allow things to be unsafe, um, and, um, something in Jersey City that's being built unsafe, even though it's inside the plan, still needs to be, in my opinion, um, not allowed, so with that, uh, I'm gonna vote a no.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Yeah, that area is so much active, Dickinson High School is there, and people are walking like crazy on that area, so I would vote no.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Um, I, I do share Commissioner Torres's, uh, concerns about the balconies, um. Uh, unfortunately, you know, there's only so much we can require, I believe, um. It is legal to put the balconies on the face of the building like that, uh, especially considering the size of the units, any additional open space is a plus for the, the residents of that building, uh, I appreciate the applicant, uh, agreeing to work with staff on the tree, and, uh, an alternative to the drainage situation, so at least we could cover up that lower opening, uh, so with that said, I'm gonna vote aye.
We forgot Commissioner Cruz, I believe.
No, we got him.
No, we got him, uh, motion fails, two in favor, four opposed.
Okay, so we have, uh, Santa, we typically take another vote on this?
Yes, Chairman, we typically take another motion, since the motion did not pass, it was a motion to approve, it failed, so you can entertain another motion.
Okay, I would entertain another motion then at this point. And that motion could either be for another approval vote, correct, counsel, or denial?
It would be either for another approval motion or for a denial, however, given the way the vote went on the last one, uh, it typically is a motion to deny.
Chair, since I make the motion to approve, can I make the same motion to deny?
You could, it's a separate motion.
Okay, so Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny case P two two dash one one zero as presented.
Okay, we have a motion for denial, do I have a second?
Uh, Chairman, Chairman, before we move forward with this second vote, is there the ability to remove the balconies from this project and come back before this board and represent this?
Um, I mean, I certainly can't speak for what the vote would be in the future, that seems to be the issue here.
I, I, I believe it is, and otherwise, this is as of right zoning, so to me, I would prefer to speak with my clients, hold up a second vote to deny here, and come back to the board with a, a project that removes those balconies.
So counsel, you're asking that the application be suspended and counted through another here?
That is correct. And obviously, at this point, we would have to waive our statutory rights as far as an automatic approval, so.
Which you'd be willing to do.
I would, I would request that I at least get to speak with my client before I agree to that, but yes, I would essentially be agreeing to that.
Okay.
To put you in a position, but we would need that in order to, uh, suspend the vote on the motion to deny.
And I completely understand that, so I would just ask that you just move on to the next case, and after I speak with my client, I would raise my hand and get back in front of this board.
Santa, we can do that?
In an effort to extend Mr. Lean every possible professional courtesy, we can suspend it, give him that opportunity and courtesy, and then, uh, Mr. Lean, in the crazy scenario that your client would not agree to such thing, we are going to pull the motion and vote on it, so, uh, let's move quickly, please.
Okay, let's, um.
So we're gonna suspend this out. Chairman Langston, um.
Go ahead.
Didn't we have a situation like this at the last minute, where the council wanted to, uh, change, not, not continue to hear, or let us vote? Uh, and we spent a so much amount of time on something, I know this wasn't that much time, but it takes a president, that if we spend a few hours on this, and then at the last minute, because the vote may not be going that way, um, winds up being, um, uh, which wanna take it out, after we sat and listened to the argument, was it that, um, something had, has happened in the past, that we chose not to do that, um?
I, I don't remember, I, I know we did, um, I don't recall what application it was.
I don't recall what application it was either.
Yeah, I don't think I'd wanna say anything, but, um.
And, and Chairman, I, I, I would argue it's my legal right to withdraw an application as of right, especially since the, the issue at hand does not make this less or more compliant with the zoning, I, I, I think I think I have to have a right, because my, my big concern here is you get, you, this, this gets shot down, I have to go back and take the balconies out of this, this is no, that's in my eyes, not a substantial change to the application, and a substantial change is required for me to submit a new application, and not have that previous approval, or that previous hearing be considered, you know, the actual approval itself, I, I, I don't think that that changes the dial. I think this is me agreeing to go and speak with my client, see if they're willing to change something, not even have you vote on it this evening, come back before this board and say, we're, we're agreeing to something, but I, I can't do that without speaking to my client.
Uh, agreed.
Um, I agree with that, that's fair, that is fair.
At, at the.
I agree as well, uh, Chair.
Yeah, we were, i- if the tipping point for me is if I said the motion is made and seconded, now we're into the vote on the motion, I, I wouldn't allow counsel to make that change, once we're in a vote. Um, you know, we've had in the past attorneys try and pull an application during a vote, uh, that certainly wouldn't be. Wouldn't be the case here. So since we were technically in between motions and. You know, Mr. Lean has been good about carrying this.
Well, the way Mr. Lee just uh counsel, just counsel presented it now saying that he um. Yes, it is in the change of shape of the inside of the building, the apartment, shape of the lot, but the footprint of the building. Is something that they're gonna look to with the balconies in all due respect. It it it's only uh I he goes back to the applicant and speaks to the applicant. I mean.
Agreed.
That's what he's here for, and that's what we're here for, to listen to him. This is what the applicant is, so um. In that case, I do agree to that. It's not the same as what happened. Previously in the last case that I remember back and I just didn't want to start a precedence of something that would come back. And 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 I think in this case, in all fairness to to counsel um mean that um. I don't see that anything wrong with that. I'm okay with the the way this this going.
Agreed. And uh yeah, if we weren't still in twenty twenty here, uh counsel could just lean over to his client and talk. But you know, still in special times. Agree, counsel. We'll get right back to you. We'll call the next case and uh Lee, it's not yours, so uh we'll come back to you after the next uh. The next application and check in. We appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely appreciate the deference here. Thank you so much.
No problem. Okay, so let's uh move on to item ten. Is case P two two dash one nine five is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. Or.
Kim, this is still me. I'm sorry.
Or was I? With C variances for three thirty two Witten Street. I'm sorry, my uh screen flipped for some reason real quick.
Good evening, everyone. Uh Stephen Joseph Cassano Quigley Trami for the applicant. Counsel, can I confirm? We have notices and they are in order. This was um previously carried.
As you counsel, I have received your offer, David, of publication proof of mail with respect to the application at three three two Witten Street here in the city. All does appear to be in order. Chairman, we can mark it as A one for the record.
Thank you so much. Uh before we get into the application, there's just a a threshold matter that I want um just for the record. This property is subject to a redevelopment agreement with the J C R A. My client is the designated redeveloper. Under that agreement, um the property was previously owned by the J C R A, uh which is why the this property is subject to such an agreement. Um, three three two Witten Street. It it's located mid-block between Maple Street and Lafayette Street in the residential zone. Of the Morse Canal redevelopment plan. It's an existing multifamily for units. The applicant is proposing to expand and restore. Um, a historically significant building in this area. The density will get reduced to three units down from four. In order to accomplish that, we do need preliminary and final major site plan approval. The reason for that is because the building is being expanded by twenty five hundred. Square feet or fifty percent triggers major site plan, even though it's a smaller building. Um, we're also requesting some C variances. There's a rear yard setback variance for the deck in the rear and a small building coverage variance. I have Jeff Lewis here this evening as our architect. I have Sam Bellamy as our planner. Um, and let's get Jeff sworn in and uh take you through the plans.
All right, thank you, counsel. And um Mr. Lewis has already been sworn in tonight. He has been qualified. Uh, and we'll just have Mr. Lewis um confirm that he knows he is still under oath and is qualified. But I do want to jump in real quick, and I completely forgot. I was corrected a few meetings ago. It is pronounced Whiten Street.
Waited. Yeah, you're right.
Whiten Street. Um, so I just want to make that correction. I apologize to the City of Jersey City for announcing it once again. Uh, so Mr. Lewis, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I am still under oath. I confirm that and my license is still active and under oath, I knew it was Whiten Street and I'm wondering if you guys are wrong or not. So let me start with my screen share here. Okay. So I'm gonna skip all the zoning stuff because Sam's gonna do a great job going over all that and I'm gonna go right into the site plan. Um, we are again here proposing new concrete curbing, new concrete sidewalks. We are planting one new street tree in front of this property. Uh, moving on to our property, we are um building. One new staircase up to the second floor entry on the right side of our building. Then on the left side of the building, we have just a few steps down into kind of a sunken ground floor area. And that area includes a hundred and twenty seven square feet of a lawn. And then underneath that first staircase I mentioned, we have our trash area. Uh, also, we have a sidewalk way along the side of the building. Uh, this leads us to the rear yard and along the way passes our sprinkler room, as this will be a sprinkler building and uh our all of our meters. In the backyard, we have a ten by twenty five permeable paver patio. And a three hundred and eighty six square foot lawn and landscaped area, all enclosed by a six foot wood privacy fence. Uh, this is starting at our ground floor. The ground floor is like two steps below grade in the front of the building and actually at grade at the back of the building. Um. So what we have here is one apartment. This is apartment number one. It's three bedrooms and two baths, one thousand two hundred and thirty three square feet. Uh, looking at the plan, you enter here actually off of that little sidewalk way that I mentioned. You enter into the living, dining, kitchen area in the front. And then in the back, we have the three bedrooms, two bathrooms. And then like all of the, all three of the apartments, we have a ducted furnace for heat and air conditioning and washer dryer in the unit. And then lastly, uh we have direct access from one of the bedrooms and from the master suite out to that backyard area. The second floor is access from the front staircase, which comes directly from the sidewalk up to the second floor. Uh, it brings us to an entry foyer which has two doors. Uh, one of these doors leads to a staircase up to apartment number three, and then the second door is the entry to apartment number two. Which takes up this entire second floor. Uh, this apartment is one thousand two hundred and twenty square feet. It's also three bedrooms and two bathrooms. Uh, so it's flipped here where the three bedrooms are actually to the front. And then the living, dining, kitchen area is in the back of the building, and we did this so that the living area could open up. Onto this new uh wood deck. It's a one-story deck that is ten feet by eighteen feet, seven inches. Moving up to the third floor, um it's this is all apartment number three. You would come up the stairs here into a one thousand four hundred and seventeen square foot, three bedroom, two and a half bath apartment. This one, we're back with the living, dining, kitchen in the front, three bedrooms and two baths in the back of the building. Uh, however, here we actually, the stair actually goes up one more story. I'm gonna go to that for now so I can explain. What we have is there's an existing gable roof that encloses here. Um, we're opening this space up, so that's the living space of apartment number three. We'll have cathedral ceilings above. And then at the back half of that space, and this is gonna be a little clearer when we look at the building elevation. We have a small mezzanine area. This is open through the cathedral ceiling here. This is a forty eight inch high uh knee wall. Uh, the space is a total of three hundred and thirty one square feet. Uh, we have a half bath and a family room, and then we're just providing direct access to a roof deck over the rest of that roof space. Uh, the roof deck is a total of five hundred and ninety two square feet. This is the front elevation to the building. We've been working with historic to um. To get this done. Our goal here is to return to the look and feel of the nineteen thirty eight photo, which you can see on the right here. And so this is what we're doing with our building finishes. Um, most of these materials are new materials that are um. Meant to replicate or match uh the historic ones. One of the main exceptions is that the base of the building, the existing brick. Is going to be cleaned, repaired and repainted as best we can. Above that, the main finish is a fiber cement siding. It's white for the most part. However, we do have a little gray section above uh the um walkway along the side of the building. All the windows are all fiberglass and the color of them is ebony. Uh, we are recreating the Italian A trim, which I we can see is still there, but in just very bad shape, so we're going to be recreating it and painting it. Gray at the top and the bottom and then white elsewhere. Uh, the front door has that same matching trim. And we're also replacing the front door with a new door, which is going to match the existing door of and what's there right now, which has been there for a long time. Uh, as I mentioned, we are proposing a new front stair. This is a wood stair with wood railing. Um, at the top of the building, we have these wood brackets, which are still there, and we are keeping them and restoring them. And then lastly, I mentioned that we had a roof. Uh, this is a pitched roof. It goes from front to back. And we are going, right now it has an asphalt finish, which is obviously not original. We're gonna take that off and we're going to do a. A post-late roof on this roof. The rear elevation is uh finished mainly with dark gray vinyl siding. Uh, this is that one-story deck that we mentioned. It's made of wood, however, the um the three posts. And the deck itself are gonna be wrapped in uh gray aluminum. And the railing is built with um with composite wood panels. The color of them is cedar brown. Side elevations, you can see those um fiber cement siding finishes wrap around what was the existing building. And then the new addition on the back, we're proposing to finish with the like the gray vinyl siding like on the back. And it's the same on the other side where this is wrapping around. And I hope you can kind of see, this is the original roof pitch did this and this. And we just kept the the roof peak and then straightened it out for it to create that mezzanine, and this would be the cathedral ceiling. Based for that where the living space is. Um, that's actually it for my presentation. Like I said, we are working with historic to make sure we get all the details right on the front elevation. Um, I know we have Carolyn to present now, so I'm happy to stick around and answer questions either now or when she's done, whichever you prefer. Thanks.
Yeah, so be- before we move on to uh Carolyn, we we have been working with historic. Maggie did issue a memo today with a. A list of some some corrections and just additional notes and some uh uh minor facade tweaks. Um, that she wants in the final signature sets of plan. So we we have been working with historic. We're gonna continue to work with them. Those conditions will be incorporated into. The the resolution and in the final signature sets of plan.
All right, thank you, counsel. Um, yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Lewis. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Great, um, let's get Sam sworn in.
You swear or affirm testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? Thank you and state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure, Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y. Mr. Bellamy, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you in the past as well. Your license is current tonight as a planner?
Good evening. Yes, it is, and in good standing.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified then.
Great. Um, so getting right into the variance, uh the deviation request tonight, uh we are located in the residential district of the Morse Canal redevelopment plan. Um, the residential use, uh we're proposing three units. Um, it's actually a reduction of one unit of the current um. It's a vacant building, but had uh four units previously, uh so it is a conforming use and conforming density. The building itself is largely conforming with the bulk criteria. Um, we are proposing to maintain the the front yard setback, which does match the predominant setback of the block. Um, we are uh complying with the side yard setback. Zero feet is permitted. Um, we're actually providing a three-foot uh side yard setback on the uh on the north side of the property. Um, to allow for uh light and air for the windows that we're proposing for the addition. Um, as far as the rear yard setback, the building itself does meet the rear yard setback requirements. Um, it's sixty four point oh four feet to the to the primary building edge. So that meets both the combined front and rear yard setback of thirty five feet, as well as exceeding the the minimum twenty foot rear yard setback requirement. Um, we are asking for a maximum building coverage variance deviation. We're proposing sixty point six seven percent where a maximum of sixty percent is permitted, so we're point seven six percent over. Um, this is due to a couple of reasons. One is there is an encro- an encroachment of the adjacent building to the south onto our property. In addition, we do have to maintain the existing overhang uh on the north side of the property. Um, so that doesn't cover on the ground. It covers on the upper, upper floors. Um, overall, we are compliant and actually are under the maximum lock coverage. Um, we're at seventy nine point forty percent where a maximum of eighty five percent is permitted. Um, and we are providing rear yard landscaping and lawn area as well as permeable pavers in the in the rear yard to really minimize any. Impacts of stormwater coverage. Um, so overall, that point seven six percent uh of additional building coverage, in my opinion, is uh the minimus here. Um, we are asking for a minimum rear yard setback. Um, as I walked the board through, the building itself is compliant. Um, what is not compliant is the deck that we're proposing off of the uh the second, second level, I'll call it. Um, the deck extends ten feet into the rear yard area. Um, which does encroach upon the uh the minimum, both the the minimum twenty foot required. And uh thirty five foot combined required setback. Um, so to the edge of the deck is sixteen point oh four feet. Rear yard setback and um from from the rear property line. The deck itself is setback three feet from the side property lines. It's also surrounded on all sides by a six-foot screening wall. Um, that both acts as a a privacy barrier um between the adjacent neighbors, um both visually, um it also. Um, you know, would would prevent, you know, seeing into adjacent rear yards or adjacent rear yards, seeing onto the the deck area. Um, providing that deck space does allow for each of the units to have a private outdoor space. The garden level will have access to the rear yard. Um, the second level will have access to the deck, and then the third level, an attic would have access to the uh to the roof deck that's being proposed. So it does add open space for all the units. Um, with this proposed project, we are renovating and rehabilitating an existing. Um, vacant historic structure, so we are bringing it back into a a uh permitted uh residential use. Um, we are improving the facade of the building. We're adding front yard landscaping, so I do find that we are making substantial improvement to the property. Um, that are in line with the redevelopment plan, and overall, the benefits here would substantially outweigh any detriment. Uh, we are advancing purposes of the municipal land land use law. Again, this is an appropriate use and development of the property. Um, providing in addition, rehabilitating the existing historic structure. Um, and providing a a three-unit building, um which is consistent with the R District, um promoting purpose A. Um, we are providing a building that is complying with all setback and uh setback requirements, providing light air and open space. Um, in in addition, the three-foot uh side yard setback we're proposing isn't required, but I think it does add. Additional uh space between the adjacent property, um consistent with purpose C. Again, the density is consistent with the area and consistent with what the zoning calls for. Um, consistent with purpose E and then rehabilitating the structure, um improving the facade, adding landscaping. Um, and uh that all adds to the promoting a desirable visual environment, consistent with purpose I. Um, in my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the general welfare here. Again, we're providing a building that's complying with all building and fire codes. Um, and improving a vacant historic structure. Um, in addition, we are, there's no substantial um impairment to the intended purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Again, this project would promote the purposes of our district by uh preserving the residential character of the Lafayette neighborhood. Um, the redevelopment plan does call for um improving uh duralic billi- buildings, um adding residential uses. Um, and preserving the character of the of this area, which I think we are doing with this project. Um, so with that, I think both the positive, negative criteria has been met here. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bellamy. I appreciate it. Um, yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else from the board?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bellamy.
That does conclude our our direct testimony this evening.
All right, thank you, counsel. So uh at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application. Please raise your hands. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
Chair, senior more public, I wish to close the public portion.
Second it. Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Kim, do you have anything you want to uh discuss?
Yes, um, just some usual matters, and then I'm just going to expand a little bit on Mr. Bellamy's uh testimony. Um. So I already heard uh you, Mr. Joseph, agreed to the uh historic preservation memo uh dated today's date, March fourteenth. Um, are the conditions also laid out in the planning staff memo dated March thirteenth agreeable to you and your client?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, um, and yeah, just just a few things I wanted to expand upon. Um, so planning staff does agree with the. Uh, interpretation of the variances and um the analysis of the negative and positive criteria as. Uh, the professional planner here has made a a case for. Um, it it is not the uh building footprint that is encroaching on that twenty foot minimum. It is just mere merely the elevated deck, which. It is just mere merely the elevated deck, which does contemplate and actually interpret the function of the building in a more rational way, because it's allowing all three units to have an outdoor space in the backyard. Um, and in that neighborhood, as I used to live in that neighborhood, many of the backyards have such an elevated backyard deck. Um, for this exact reason, it gives each unit their own uh outside space, and it works. It functions in the neighborhood and um planning staff does not feel that it would have a negative impact on the air light or space or the public's general health, welfare, or well-being. Um, this building is incorporating elements of historic uh rehabilitation, um, which is certainly a um a a positive mechanism working in this structure here. Uh, also, it is uh complying with the green area ratio um to combat uh stormwater and flood uh issues in Jersey City. Um, so all in all, um, I think this is certainly, of course, this is meeting the objectives and goals of the redevelopment plan. But um the uh point, I believe, seven uh uh increase to the building uh coverage, which creates a variance is definitely de minimis um considering especially it's meeting the green area ratio for the uh the site. So all in all, um, planning staff recommends approval and um believes that this will be an improvement to the neighborhood and uh meet the goals of the uh redevelopment plan.
Okay, thanks, Cam. We appreciate it. So entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash one nine five as presented to the board this evening.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gungadin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
So I uh I definitely agree with Mr. Bellamy's uh testimony and uh also our own staff's testimony. Uh, I don't think there's any detriment to the zone plan or the master plan and uh yeah, I agree with Cam's uh assessment on the uh the balconies as well. It's really just an extension of that backyard. Um, so with that, I'm going to vote aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Uh, you all. We uh want to bring Mr. Lean back up.
Chairman, I'm here and I have had a chance to speak with my uh my client. Uh, we will agree to carry this matter from this evening. Uh, we will be waiving our statutory rights. Um, and we will likely be coming back to this board uh with amended plans. Um, it's just a matter of time until I get those.
Okay, uh. Any idea, Council, on a timeframe?
My hope would be quite quickly, hopefully two or three weeks, and maybe we can be heard sometime in Ann in April.
Um. Cam, how do we look? Or or even Santo, do we uh, do we want to preserve notice and put it a date certain?
Well, without the file plans, he's going to have to renotice, so.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Okay, understood. All right, so uh we are going to carry um case P two-two dash one-one-zero preliminary and final major site plan for five-eleven Newark Ave to a date uncertain. And uh if you were here for that application tonight, you will will receive new notice on when that hearing will be.
Chairman, I will carry it to the first meeting in April and have Mr. Lean check in with us then and tell us where he's at with it. Uh, just to keep everybody informed since I suspect the first meeting in April, Mr. Lean will have some matter on and be here anyway.
Ca- Council, I I believe that is um a good idea. I I don't think I would be able to proceed with this same application again on that night. It would be more just to inform the board where we sit.
Okay, so Santo, we don't have to preserve notice or or provide notice for that, correct?
We're going to carry it to that date. However, uh, Mr. Lean will have to probably update us, further extend his time. And when we give him a date, Mr. Lean is going to renotice the application more of an abundance of caution than anything else, uh, given the plans are going to change, so.
And and Council, I think the idea is just to make sure that everybody remembers that I have to give an update, not to actually for me to present anything. It's it's really just a a holding spot.
Understood.
Don't want it to get lost.
Right.
And I will, I swear to the public that uh I will not accept any testimony on a new project at that point. Uh, so we'll just get an update. So we'll carry, uh, I'll rescind the last thing I said and call it uh case P two-two dash one-one-zero. Uh, preliminary final major site plan for five-eleven Newark Avenue is going to be carried to a date certain of April fourth at this time. All right. Thank you, Council. We appreciate it.
I thank everyone for their time. Have a good evening.
You too. Uh, Bridget, do you want to get a uh break? This might be a good time.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, let's uh take ten, everybody. It's six fifty-three. We'll be back at seven oh three. And let's uh move down to item eleven is case P two-two dash one-six-nine is a minor site plan for two-eighty-eight Grand Street.
Good evening, everybody. Stephen Joseph Costano, Quigley Charami. Uh, I see that we've got Raul promoted. Great. This is a uh minor site plan, so no notice was required for this application. Two-eighty-eight Grand Street is located on Grand and Bright Streets in Zone One of the Bright Street Triangle Redevelopment Plan. Um, the applicant's proposing a new four-story mixed-use building with four dwelling units. Uh, we're requesting minor site plan only, no variances. Raul Cabato will be presenting um the plans this evening, so let's go ahead and get him sworn in.
All right. Thank you, Council.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
Yeah, I I do.
And if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure. Raul Cabato, R A U L C A B A T O.
Mr. Cabato, good evening. Your license as an architect is current tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Can you share my screen here? Can everybody see the screen?
Uh, we can see our screen, but it's uh, it's your files.
Oh. Okay, let's try this again.
Information was in there as well.
Can everybody see the screen now? The drawings?
No.
No, we don't have them.
There we go.
Okay, great. Okay, so the um project is two-eighty-eight Grand Street. Uh, the project is located in the middle of a triangular shaped block formed by Borough Street to the west, Bright Street to the north, and Grand Street. The property is uh in Zone One of the Triangle Development District of the Bright Street Redevelopment Zone. Um, the existing lot is irregularly shaped with a twenty-foot, uh twenty-two-foot frontage on Grand Street, twenty-two-point-five-foot frontage on Bright Street. The length of the lot is fifty-nine uh point forty-one feet to the west and fifty-three-point-ninety-five feet to the east. The lot has an area of one thousand two hundred forty-six point nine square. The lot has an area of one thousand two hundred forty-six point nine square feet. We are proposing the demolition of an existing four-story structure. And constructing a new four-story mixed-use structure with commercial use on the ground floor. And dwelling units on the second, third, and fourth floors. No variances are requested at this time. The project as designed shall conform with the requirements, with all the requirements of the Bright Street redevelopment zone. Also note that um, the subject building is located in a flood zone, zone AE per the FEMA flood map. It is therefore mandated to comply with the green area ratio requirements. And the worksheet is here to the right. The elements provided to comply with the G A R are two street trees, one to be planted along Grand Street. And one along Bright Street also proposes a two hundred forty-eight point two square foot green roof with at least two inches of growth medium. Additionally, the first floor is elevated about three and a half feet above the sidewalk outside. Being in the flood zone, the placement of the first floor is therefore mandated to be one foot above the base flood elevation as designated by FEMA. And in accordance with the local ordinance. Going to the plans, there shall be a six hundred seventy-one square foot commercial unit on the first floor. Also on this floor shall be mechanical and trash rooms. Both accessible from the bright street side. Should assign being installed for the commercial establishment on the first floor, we have made the calculations for its size and determined its location. The second, third, and fourth floors shall consist of three individual dwelling units, each with three bedrooms, one, two, three. And two full bathrooms. Um, and they also have their own laundry facilities. Each unit shall be approximately nine hundred fifty square feet in area. All the units have access to the five hundred twenty-six square foot roof deck. As previously mentioned, the remainder of the roof shall have green roof elements consisting of self-training plant trays. The system was selected for its ease of installation, reasonable cost and easy maintenance. The modular nature of the system ensures that replacing parts become effortless. The benefits include stormwater management, reduction of the heat island effect, reduction of energy usage, noise reduction. In addition to the visual and aesthetic benefits. Um, also to be located on the roof R D condensing units. We propose to clad the facades fronting both Grand Street and Bright Street primarily with a tan brick base. And gray fiber cement siding from the second floor on. The window shall have a light gray finish. The proposed corner is on top as of the building as well as the corners above the storefront. Shall be painted custom brackets on fiber cement siding, on fiber cement panel. Pound brick. Uh, samples of the materials of finishes can be found on sheet A three hundred of our drawing set. Information regarding the landscaping trace and the roof deck assembly can be found on sheet A four zero one. That's, that's my presentation.
Great, thank you, Raul. Um, I, I think just to be safe, we should enter this as a exhibit A one. It's, it's really just enlarged portions of the, the plans that were submitted that, that were somewhat annotated, but um. It's fifteen pages long, so I think just to be safe, it could enter this as an exhibit. Um, and I think it's A one. Wonderful, thank you. Um, and that concludes our direct testimony.
All right, thank you, Mr. Joseph. Um, yeah, I have no questions, Mr. Cabato. Anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gabato. And if we could, please uh, email that packet over to City Plannings for uh, the record.
Absolutely.
Okay, council, anything else?
That, that's it.
All right, uh, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here that wants to comment on uh. Minor site plan for two eighty-eight Grand Street, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Thanking nobody from the public chair wishing to speak. I move to close the public speaking portion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, public is closed. Uh, Kim, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, thank you, Chair. I'm only going to ask Mr. Joseph if you could please agree to the conditions in the planning staff memo dated March thirteenth.
Of course, absolutely.
Okay, um, the proposed plan before the board tonight comports with the redevelopment plan and master plan and planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
Chair, I can make a motion to approve case P two, two dash one, six, nine as presented to the board this evening for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair, uh, Dungadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Thank you. And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. All right, let's call case P two, two dash two, two, three is a preliminary final major site plan amendment with a C variance. Uh, for uh, New Jersey Route four forty and New Jersey Route one eighty-five.
Chairman Langston, uh, Commissioners, Donald Pepe from Scritzy Hollenbeck on behalf of the applicant MCR fifty-four Route four forty J C LLC. That's a mouthful. Uh, we're looking for preliminary and final site plan. The property is on Route four forty and one eighty-five. It's in the city's port industrial zone, which is specifically allows terminal facilities for rail truck and waterboard transportation. I have two witnesses, but I'm intending only to put on one unless the board has questions. I'm going to ask Joe Sparone to present the application. I have our traffic engineer here as well, if necessary.
Thank you, Council Chairman. I've received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application. P two, two dash two, two, three. Uh, I've had the opportunity to review it. It does appear to be in order, so we're going to go ahead and mark that as A one.
All right, thank you, Council.
Um, Mr. Pepe, are there any professionals that are not among the panels?
Uh, it looks like I have Joe on and. Uh, Patrick Downey, I don't see if necessary. He's uh, my traffic consultant.
Okay, we'll get him up.
Yeah, his hand is raised there, Cam.
Okay, yep, we got him.
Thank you, Cameron. Um, Mr. Sparone, uh, for the record is going to be testifying as both a civil engineer and a planner. Joe, why don't you share your credentials?
Did you raise your right hand if he swore?
Excuse me.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Yes, Joseph Sparone, S is Sam, P is in Paul, A R O N E. I'm a director here at uh, Dynamic Engineering and we are the civil engineers and I'm also the professional planner on the project.
Okay, and Mr. Sparone, your license as an engineer and a planner are current in the state of New Jersey tonight?
They are.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Appreciate it, thank you. I'm going to share um. Share the screen. Uh, hopefully everyone will be able to see the exhibits here.
Okay, we have it, sir.
Great.
That's a lot of icons on that program.
You're saying you don't want to see the icons?
I, I thought word is difficult to maneuver.
Uh, we like to draw with a lot of things, so. Uh, what you got before you is an existing conditions photo exhibit. Don, I believe this was, these were submitted to the board or do we mark them as exhibits?
Uh, these were in black and white submitted to the board.
Um, so I would, I would mark this as an exhibit because this isn't exactly what was in the plan sheet. It's got some added annotation plus some photographs that were added to it. I know they were emailed to the board ahead of time, but I think we should probably mark it as exhibit A one.
I, I agree. Are, are we A one or two? Or do you mark the, uh, I forgot, do you mark?
Notice it's A one, Council.
A two.
And how many slides are we talking about for the record?
Uh, I'm going to have two. I'm just going to have this and then I'm going to have a colorized site plan.
Okay, and uh, you said uh, planning staff has this already? It was emailed to them?
It was emailed ahead of time.
Okay, so uh, Tim, if we could, let's just make sure that makes its way into the record.
Well, this was submitted after, no?
Correct, it was submitted as part of being exhibit for tonight, so prior to the hearing, but after the application.
Well, let's mark it as A two.
We'll make sure you have a copy one way or another.
Right. And then anything that you submitted as exhibits. Not with the application, but subsequent to the filing. We can just keep marking them. This will be A two and the next one eight three, et cetera.
Great, thank you.
So as I mentioned, this is titled Existing Conditions Photo Exhibit. It's dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, today's date. And what you see on the screen here is um. A aerial, aerial plan showing the existing additions, the site being in the middle of the page, uh, with the yellow outline marked P I Q. Uh, as you can see, it's labeled block thirty, thirty-five, uh, lots two, three, four, and five point oh one, which comprises the, the subject site. Uh, that's part of the application. Uh, as you can see, and I think most people are familiar uh, with the site and the location itself. If you've uh, driven in the area, you got the New Jersey Turnpike Extension to the north. Uh, that's elevated to the site. You have New Jersey State Highway Route four forty, uh, which is located east of the site. Um, you have the Conrail uh, line and then you also have the uh, the Hudson Light Rail line. Uh, and then beyond that, you actually have the, the Bayonne exit for the New Jersey Turnpike Extension uh, with the uh, the interchange and the overpasses to the south here. Uh, for which you circulate to get on and off the New Jersey uh, Turnpike Extension and the four forty and vice versa. Uh, the site itself, as you can see, uh, is a tank farm. You got nine tanks located at the site. Uh, one driveway in and out onto New Jersey State Highway Route four forty. Uh, and then in addition to the aerial map itself, we have just several photographs. Photo one, that's looking from the top of the Jersey Turnpike Extension out onto the site. As I mentioned, the extension being elevated over the top of the site and the rail lines that are adjacent to it. Uh, photo two is looking down four forty south. Uh, as you can see, you can see the site to the right of you as if you were driving on Route four forty south. Uh, and then photo three is kind of the opposite where you, if you were coming north on four forty, just coming. Uh, below the, the overpasses for the interchange and you look to your left, you would see the tank farm and that's basically what you would see today. Going to move on to the site plan rendering, uh, also dated today, uh, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. We'll mark this exhibit A three, if I understood correctly.
Correct.
Um, what you see here is a colorized version of the overall site plan that was submitted uh, as part of the plan set itself. Uh, the overall site plan being uh, or the site plan itself being uh, that was page five of the site plan set. And what it shows here is uh, exactly what uh, the title of the page says. It's a rendering of the site plan layout. Uh, in addition to the usual layout items, we also include the landscaping, uh, superimposed to kind of give. Uh, a real world impression of what it might look like as you're looking from the top down. Um, as was mentioned, uh, the proposed property is located in the Port Industrial District PI Zone. Uh, what is proposed as far as the use, it's, it's a long, it's a long title, but term, terminal facility for rail truck and waterborne transportation, including storage and containerization facility. So I'm going to use terminal facility for short, uh, as we move through the presentation. Um, and predominantly, uh, the use that is proposed is going to be a, a container storage yard, a shipping container storage yard. Uh, so what you see before you is you have a single access point similar to the existing condition, but obviously the access point itself. Uh, will be significantly upgraded. Um. The access in New Jersey State Highway Route four forty obviously fall under the jurisdiction of NJ DOT. That access will have to comply with DOT uh, requirements for safe and efficient access and per their code and regulations. Um, the access itself will be a single right-in, right-out driveway located along Route four forty. Uh, southbound, it will also include um, off-site improvements, uh, encompassing a D cell lane. Uh, coming into the site for the trucks that would need to maneuver into the site. As you enter the site, uh, you got a single driveway entering heading, uh, would basically be north, call it northwest. Uh, into the site itself, um, Jersey State Highway Route four forty. And you know, similar to the Turnpike, uh, extension is elevated to the site with elevations, uh, call them thirty, forty in this area. The site itself will be down around elevation twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. To kind of give you an idea how that sits in relation to the highway itself. Uh, Route four forty then continues to drop and you get more even with the grade of the site as you move somewhere towards the center. And then um, you get a little differential in grade here as well. Uh. What we're proposing is, uh, as I mentioned, is container storage, uh, area, as you can see outlined here with the dashed line. Um, access will be provided via the single driveway. As you come down into the site, there'll be a fifty-foot. Uh, wide drive aisle along the rear of the site, uh, for access by trucks. Um, they would come in, they would stage in this area. Uh, there is a turnaround at the end, so the trucks can turn around and then maneuver. Uh, after dropping off or picking up a storage container or shipping storage container and then make their way back out to Route four forty southbound. Uh, in addition to uh, truck access, there is a potential rail spur that is proposed as part of the project. So it'll be a bi-modal uh, shipping container, uh, storage facility, uh, where you could have truck access as well as rail. So if you got uh, boxes coming off the trucks, uh, able to accommodate those, uh, same with the trucks and then um, vice versa for rail. Uh, so you can move it from trucks to rail, rail to trucks. Um, so uh, idea here is to provide flexibility and be able to accommodate the different needs of uh, different uh, different shipments. Um. Zoning wise, uh, as I mentioned, permitted use, uh, as Don mentioned, also permitted use. Uh, comply with the zoning requirements as far as minimum lot area, minimum lot width, minimum lot depth, uh, maximum lot coverage and minimum number and length of curb cut. The remainder of the bulk criteria are not applicable since there is not a structure proposed as part of the, the project. As you can see, um, it'll be basically an asphalt, uh, storage area. Um, there will be some subsurface, uh, stormwater drainage in the form of a pervious pavement, uh, system. That's this hatch area or stipple hatch area that you see. Kind of towards the center of the paved area. In addition to that, you got several um, lights proposed throughout. Uh, that meet the ordinance requirement as far as twenty-foot high and providing uh, illumination uh, across the site as required per uh, the Jersey City ordinance. Um. In addition to those improvements, uh, as you can see, uh, there'll be a stand of trees proposed along the frontage of the site to meet the street tree requirement. Um, there will be, uh, let me get the number right. I believe it's ninety-seven, yeah, ninety-seven trees proposed as part of the project. Uh, in addition to that, there is fencing proposed and there are a couple of variances that uh, we are requesting, one of them being for a chain-linked fence. Along the frontage of the property. Um, in addition to that, there will be a proposed freestanding sign that's going to be located. Uh, right next to the driveway exit. Uh, variances uh, are requested as part of the proposed freestanding sign. There's two of them. One for sign height and one for sign setback. The real reason being, um. The sign height is measured from grade and as I mentioned, uh, the highway grade of Route four forty is higher than the site, so for it to be visible to Route four forty. Um, it needs to be higher because the grade is lower than the roadway elevation itself, so that's the reason for requesting the variance for the ten-foot sign height. And then the sign setback, um, we're proposing zero, but it is thirty, approximately thirty feet from the curb line. So again, that's a function of how the right-of-way cuts into the site, as you can see here at this portion of the area by the access drive. So still setback quite a ways from the roadway itself. Um, but we're requesting the variance so that again, it's for a visibility, uh, requirement, pushing it further away is just going to make it so that it can't be as visible. or even visible um from Route four forty as people are traveling south and looking for the access drive to to enter the site. So uh, in addition, um, we will have to the the storage, uh, the shipping container storage area. We are proposing eleven parking spaces, one of them being uh make ready E V uh for electric vehicle uh if needed. Um, again, no, no structure is proposed, so per ordinance, there is no parking required as part of the application. Um, but you know, to be conservative, eleven parking spaces are being provided uh in case needed for, you know, staff or you know, whatever else might be coming to the site, so they do have a place to park that's out of the way of the container storage and uh the the stacking and maneuvering areas. As was mentioned, uh, the driveway does fall under DOT jurisdiction. Um, the access uh is actually, there's, there's already a permit application into the DOT, and it's actually at the tail end of the permit access application. Uh, we're going through final comments and administrative items with DOT as we speak for the driveway as proposed on this page. Um, so they will review it uh as far as access for the site. Um, a traffic impact study was submitted, uh, found that there was no significant uh degradation to Route four forty and the surrounding area. Again, DOT will be reviewing all that. That same information was submitted to DOT. Uh, so for compliance as far as an access permit that is required as part of the site. Um, stormwater, uh, again, I I mentioned there'll be underground uh stormwater detention in the form of uh a pervious pavement system. So any runoff coming from the paved uh container storage area will be collected by the pervious pavement and or pavers. It will infiltrate into the storage area below grade, and then it will be discharged to the DOT system as it uh drains to today. Uh, again, now all have to be in compliance with DOT uh requirements, uh also in compliance with NJAC seven colon eight uh Jersey City Ordinance requirements and soil erosion and sediment control. Um, with that, Don, I mean, that that's all I had, you know, as far as direct and description of the site.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think that's that's plenty, but just switching hats for a moment. You see the uh variances required falling into C one and C two categories based ba- principally on the characteristics of the property himself itself with respect to the signage that you mentioned, the need for the additional height and the uh need for the relief from the setback. And then with respect to the fence, just to, you know, in the flexible C two criteria.
Correct. Yeah, so, oh, sorry. You want to go, Doc?
No, no, go ahead, please.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I thought you were done. Um, yeah, correct. I mean, I mentioned the the reasons for uh the sign variance with the setback and the height and due to the grade and the constraints of the site and visibility to Route four forty. Uh, the 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 chain link fence, um, reason for chain link in this case is uh you have chain link there today. There's other areas that have chain link fence uh predominantly because it is along Route four forty, so that is pretty common along Route four forty. The idea being is for security purposes. Other idea is we're not looking for the fence to be a predominant uh feature as far as as you're driving past the site on Route four forty. The idea being is the fence will blend in. Um, as we mentioned, there's ninety-seven trees proposed along the frontage, so the trees themselves would be more of the predominant feature, and the fence would basically blend into the background. So uh that's the idea for the chain link fence and yeah. In my opinion, granting the variance will advance the purposes of municipal land use law and promote the general wearfare. Um, granting the requested variances will guide the appropriate use and development of the property in a manner that will promote the general wearfare consistent with purpose A. Um, with a permitted terminal facility. It also provides sufficient space in an appropriate location for the proposed industrial use consistent with purpose G. Uh, the proposed project will promote a more desirable visual environment through the creative development techniques consistent with purpose I. And by replacing the existing above ground storage tank facility with a new terminal facility, uh, the proposed development will also promote conservation of open space, energy resources and natural resources by providing sustainable landscape elements in the perimeters consistent with purpose J. Um, granting the variances will not result in substantial detriment to the general wearfare. Uh, as stated in the terminal, as stated, the proposed terminal facility uh is permitted in the P I district um and is consistent with the surrounding industrial area. Uh, in addition to the surrounding industrial area, you also have a site that's surrounded by right aways. Uh, you have Route four forty, you have the elevated section of the turnpike extension, you have the turnpike extension uh interchange to Route four forty and the toll plaza that goes along with that, plus you have rail that borders the property. So really no uses border the property and uses beyond those right aways are generally industrial and commercial in nature. Um, proposed landscaping will improve the aesthetics of the property and help the managed stormwater runoff and the proposed driveway and eternal circulation uh accommodates the si- safe and efficient movement of cars, trucks throughout the facility. Uh, granting the variances likewise will not result in substantial detriment to the zoning ordinance or zone plan. The purpose of the P I district is to, I quote, enhance and accommodate the city's working waterfront and provide an area of current port activity and future port development and appropriate locations served by extensive transportation facilities with adequate buffering to protect nearby residential neighborhoods. Again, located very far from any adjacent residential neighborhoods and separated from any general residential neighborhoods by either other commercial industrial uses and or highways or railways. Um, subject property was identified in the master uh planned land use map uh dated March ninth, twenty twenty-one. As port industrial, the proposed terminal facility again is consistent with the surrounding port industrial area. Um, proposed project will also promote the goals of the master plan, including goal five. Continue to develop regional economic engines with the city that support local economic development objectives. Goal seven. Uh, sustain global economic nodes such as the port that support regional economic growth without reversely impacting the quality of life in the city's neighborhoods. Um, so again, that I I think for all those reasons, the variances can be supported.
That's uh perfect, Joe. And we we got two letters, planning review memo uh dated three fourteen, engineering review memo dated three fourteen, and we're okay with all the conditions in those memos?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Nothing further. Chairman Langston, I have a traffic consultant. If the board has any questions, uh, I can make him available, but I do don't intend to put him on as a principal of this.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, I I don't think I need traffic testimony. Um, I I'll refer to the rest of the board for that. Um, Mr. Sproon, um, is there a cleanup that's involved in this site?
Uh, there will be as part of the demolition of the storage tanks. That's the responsibility of the property owner. Um, they will be required to take down the tanks, and then if there is any remediation that's uh required as part of that, that will have to occur in accordance with state requirements.
Okay, very good. Um, that was my only question. Anybody else for Mr. Sproon?
No.
Oh, good.
Okay, and uh also, does anybody want to hear uh traffic testimony?
Um, no, not for that area. For me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sproon. We appreciate it. Uh, counsel, I think you heard the board.
I I did. Thank you, um Chairman Langston. I'll rest on that then.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Chair. Move to pull, close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Tim, do you have anything you want to comment on?
Um, just that uh the uh the variances are minor. Um, they really have to do with the the project's location. Um, uh, the signage uh variances creating more visibility for the uh location and the fencing for more security, I think are uh very minor in nature. Um, planning agrees with the development uh as presented tonight.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash two-two three as presented to the board this evening together with staff recommendation.
So.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair, Commissioner Gangen.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Torres.
Said aye.
Uh, and Chairman Langston.
Uh, I'm gonna vote aye. I I don't think there's any detriment to uh the master plan. It's it's certainly uh the industrial aspect is certainly envisioned in the master plan, so I think uh the deviations are uh de minimis in in nature. So once again, I'm gonna vote aye.
All in favor, motion passes with seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, chairman, have a great evening.
Thank you, council. All right, let's move on to item thirteen. It's case P two-two dash one nine seven is a minor site plan for one twenty-four Glenwood Ave.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Benjamin Wine of Prime and Tuvell on behalf of the applicant, uh, one twenty-four Glenwood Holdings LLC. Hope everybody's doing well this evening.
We are, we are. Thank you.
Good.
Good to see you.
So I'll jump straight in and uh and give uh the board the benefit of just a bit of background on the property uh as well as indicate what we're here proposing this evening, and I'll let my professionals take it from there. So the addressing question is, uh, oh, and I should mention to counsel first, this was a, I believe we noticed on this, and this uh I hope you have that and have reviewed it, and it should be in good form.
You did, counsel. I haven't received your affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application of one twenty-four Glenwood Avenue here in the city. It does appear to be in order. Let's mark it as A one for the record.
Thank you, counsel. But with that, the property in question is one twenty-four Glenwood Avenue. That's block one, two, three, zero, four, lot fifty-six, and we're located in the R three zone. The property currently consists of a three-story, single-family residence and uh and surrounding in the neighborhood are are varying uses, varying multifamilies uh and and various other uses. Um, what we're here this this evening is seeking minor site plan approval in order to construct a four-story, four-unit residence uh with ancillary site improvements as well, which you'll see. What I want to indicate for the record as well, um, to be overly conservative, uh, this this application was uh prepared. The plans were prepared under the R three standards um prior to uh prior to the zoning change in November. After and and that's, and to be clear, that's that's how the plans were prepared. That's how we intended to proceed. When we were doing our review, we did have an opportunity to notice that I was checking the dates again and making sure to see when when uh the new regulations would come into effect. And to be totally conservative, I ran the new R three zoning requirements against our plans as well. And where the new requirements to apply, we would actually be seeking an approximately four-foot rear yard setback deviation. So I do just want to be clear, I did not want to uh, you know, pull the sheets over the board or anything like that. And you know, during the course of uh review with uh with my professionals, this kind of came up, and I wanted to just alert the board to it. So to be clear, what I'll do this evening is I have two witnesses for you. I have our project architect, uh Martin Moreno. And then I also have planning testimony from Ms. Wurstel, who will speak to that deviation and the zone change. And again, the goal here is just to make sure that uh should the board hopefully act favorably, we don't run into any issues um down the road. So so that's my presentation this evening, Mr. Chair, uh, to start off with, unless you have any questions of me, um, I'm happy to introduce my first witness.
Um, so counsel, just to be clear, are you asking for a deviation for that? Does that apply now?
So I believe that it does under the new ordinance. And again, this 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 is it's one of those, you know, the application was filed deemed complete right around when the new ordinance would have taken effect. So what I'd like to do is ask for the deviation. If the board determines it's not necessary, that's fine. But I I do want to be on record asking for it, you know, having our planner put on testimony for it, and I'll defer, I can defer to Ms. Marion or or Mr. Krail to that effect as well. The staff report, for what it's worth, I believe uh Mr. Krail felt that uh we were compliant under the old standards. Um, again, if I can just, if you'll allow me the courtesy of putting the testimony on so that the board feels comfortable, if it is a variance, you know, having testimony on the record, I I I just, it's one of those weird ones where you're you're right around the the time change.
Uh, understood. Um, I do want to check your notice, though. Uh, there's general catchall in there for any variances that are needed. Is that in there?
That is, uh, I I'd be shocked if it wasn't, that.
There isn't. Chairman, and and again, this is, this is where we get into the time of application rule. So uh, if the application was filed and deemed complete prior to the ordinance adoption changing the zoning, that's obviously where we're at. Uh, it's a very time-sensitive type of situation, so I believe the way counsel wants to proceed is the way I would proceed. Notice for it, talk about it, and just deal with it upfront that we believe we're under the old ordinance. However, here's what it is, and here's why we believe we can sustain the variance if it's necessary, and then defer to to planning on the issue of the kind of everything.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Yeah, and to echo counsel, that's that's exactly what I'd like to do. Um, so with that, uh, Mr. Chair, if you're comfortable, uh, I'm happy to move straight in. Um, and what we'll do, so we have our project designer is uh is is Martin Moreno, who I see up. Uh, now he is not a licensed architect. Uh, Mr. Laporta is our licensed architect who signed and sealed the plans. I do see him here as well. But Mr. Moreno is is uh has been intimately familiar with this project since day one. So as I know this board has done in the past, if it's okay, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Laporta sworn in uh and accepted and qualified as an expert in the field of architecture, and then have Mr. Moreno speak to the actual plan design, if that's okay.
Absolutely, that's what we would uh ask.
Okay, so with that, uh, I do see Mr. Laporta, uh, if you can unmute yourself, Mr. Laporta. And uh, I believe uh the court reporter will get you sworn in.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
And state and spell your full name.
Thomas Laporta, T H O M A S, L A P O R T A.
Mr. Laporta, good evening. Um, I don't recall if we've qualified you in the past, have we?
No, you have not.
Okay, so um given that you're not testifying technically as an expert tonight, or you're not testifying tonight, um, your license is current tonight in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, sir. You are qualified, and uh then let's bring Mr. Moreno up to be uh sworn in.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna go ahead.
On, on, Martin, you gotta get sworn in.
So I'm sorry about that.
Our firm, the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth.
I do.
And state and spell your full name for the record, please.
My name is Martin Moreno, M A R T I N, M O R E N O.
Mr. Moreno, I appreciate your uh your willingness to to jump right in. Uh, you worked under uh Mr. Laporta's direction on this application?
I did, sir, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. So can everyone see my screen?
Yes, can, yes.
Okay, so first and foremost, thank you all so much for your time this evening. Uh, as mentioned, I'm speaking on behalf of T Laporta Architect PC here to present our project located at one twenty-four Glenwood Avenue in Jersey City, New Jersey. If I can direct your attention to the middle, the top middle of um our sheet.
Martin, if it's if it's okay, just before you do that, um, so I and I know I'll I'll familiarize you a little bit with the process, but obviously this uh these plans were submitted, but I believe you did add a rendering since the date of submission. Um, so perhaps just to be clear what uh I'll defer to counsel, but I'd like to have this this uh exhibit, which uh Martin can describe as basically what was submitted with a three D rendering on it. If that could be marked as A two, that would that would be appreciated.
Let's mark it as A two, and then if there are any other things during the testimony that were not submitted or altered for rendering for whatever the purpose may have been, we just call it out, and we can continue in sequence, A two, A three, A four, et cetera.
Certainly, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Moreno.
Thank you, thank you, Ben. So if I please may direct your attention to the top middle of the screen, our property is located in the R three multifamily mid rise district of Jersey City, New Jersey. We are located about midway between John F. Kenny Boulevard and West Side Avenue. Down here to the bottom middle, um, is an aerial view of our site showing the um, showing the surrounding structures, and to the bottom left, we have our street view of our property. Right now, currently there is a two and a half story, two-family building. And as previously mentioned, we are proposing a four-story, four-unit building that is completely zoning compliant. Um, here we have our zoning analysis in regards to our proposed survey, which I will now move down to. So here in the bottom left-hand corner, bottom, uh, the top left-hand corner, I'm sorry, is the existing um survey. As mentioned, there's a two and a half story, two-unit building. Uh, here in the middle is our proposed survey. Uh here in the middle is our proposed survey. Um we are completely compliant with our front yard setback being twenty-five point eight to match our neighboring properties. We use our front yard setback diagram here located in the bottom left-hand corner to make sure that we are complying with that. And just as a side note, we have a very, you know, large substance substantial front yard. Um front yard, which is not commonly found in Jersey City. In regards to our rear yard, which Mr. Ben Wine explained um previously. Uh was designed under the previous R three standards, so it was signed under the previous R three standards. The rear yard consists of two exterior spaces that are going to be designated strictly to both unit one and unit two. Um in regards to our side yard setbacks, the minimum were three feet on one side and two on the other. We do have our two on one side, on the other side, we have a three-point-three side yard. We decided to make it a little bit bigger, just because we figured this was going to be used heavily for circulation. Um it's not only just you're going to be used to access the rear yard, but it's also going to be used to access um utilities as well as the refuse room. Here we have our um. Just a standard coverage diagram to show that we are complying with both. Uh lot coverage and building coverage percentages. On the top right, we have just some more um site photos that were taken during a site visit at the beginning of the project. With views towards West Side Avenue as worse as well as towards JFK Boulevard. Moving on to our unit design. So as you can see bubble here, as we mentioned before, the facade was redesigned. To comply with a more traditional look per the city's comments. The first unit is one thousand two hundred and eighty square feet, um consisting of two bedrooms and three baths, three full baths. The bedrooms are oriented towards the back with the living common areas oriented towards the front of the building. Um as mentioned, we do have a refuge from here as well as a sprinkler room and our utilities, which are going to be accessed from the outside. Which is one of the reasons we wanted to make that side yard just a little bit wider. Going on to. Um our layout here towards the bottom, both unit two and unit three, also um third and second floor are a typical layout. They consist of four bedrooms and three bathrooms, and they are one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight square feet. With a very similar orientation, um with the bedrooms towards the back and the living areas towards the front. Going on to the fourth floor. Um once again, the facade was redesigned, which is why it's just a little bit different and why it's bubbled. Um this unit is uh around the same size as both unit two and three, it's one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven square feet. With very similar bedroom and bathroom count and similar orientation. In regards to the um roof, we designated the roof to be used as an exterior terrace area for unit three and unit four. Um as well as providing some sort of vegetation to serve as an eco roof for water retention and amongst other things. We also have the condensers for both unit three and unit four located on the roof, however, they will not be visible from the street. Moving on to our facade design, um as we previously stated, this was redesigned to have a more traditional look. I'm just going to quickly scroll down to pages. To here to just show how we were. How we decide to make something a little bit more traditional while respecting the uh the existing streetscape. So we decided to go with a very strong brick accent, which um is is found a lot throughout one throughout Glenwood Avenue. Uh there are some large, there are some large um apartment buildings there as well as a lot of um. It's lots of well, a lot as as well as a lot of buildings that serve as um dorms for the existing students because the university is right nearby. So we decided to have a strong brick accent as well as like a similar color to match that. In regards to the top, we decided to go with a sort of try a triple triangular design, which is very. We just found right across the street to respect our neighbors, the sort of similar triangle design. As well as a sort of dormer design, which is found um throughout Glenwood Avenue as well. In regards to the color scheme on the side, we started to do a sort of light gray, light green um siding. Because for starters, it complements a brick, and it's also found, as you can see here, in um in some other properties along Glenwood Avenue. Going back up to. I just wanted to present that first because I had the color. Um so something that should be mentioned was that we decided to do a. Um as you can see here, we tried to do a sort of. Circular bay window rather than your traditional geometric bay window. The reason for that was because existing, previously existing, there was um a bay window on the um on our neighbor's properties, we wanted to match that. So we decided to go with a uh with a more circular bay winner to match our neighbor. Also, we. As mentioned, we went we went with the strong brick accent. In the back elevation, we have um just sliding doors and a lot of windows for the units. Uh there's a lot of surrounding trees in the area, so we wanted to make sure we provided a lot a lot of windows to allow for a lot of natural light and a lot of natural ventilation. Moving on to our side yard elevation, this is the same um side of the building where the wider setback is. Showing the access to both the sprinkler room, the refuse area, and as well as meter utility access, um should it be needed. Uh this is the other side of the building, which is located on the two-foot side of the property, no windows there, it's going to have the um vinyl siding finish and stucco finish. And a section of our building to just show the. The nice comfortable tall spaces that we are providing, as well as some um eco roof and deck details for the roof. I already went, I already covered this, um so with that being said, that pretty much concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Martin, I do I do just have a couple of follow-ups, and that was very thorough, and I know this is one of your first times doing this, so thank you for that, it was a very thorough presentation. Um I just wanna, I I just wanna to highlight, I know that over the last few months, while there's not a formal, you know, neighborhood association here. You know, we've been going back and forth with Councilman Bo Gianno's office and his staff. To come up with a facade, so if you could just speak, you know, a little bit to. Why, you know, perhaps without, you don't need to show the prior facade that the board might have, but exactly, if you could just identify what those changes were, that again, the the city had requested.
Right, so originally, we, if you give me just one minute, I might be able to pull it up.
Right.
Just one second, please, if you don't mind. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
And Mr. Moreno, we do have to mark this, so if you could, when you bring that up, just describe what it is, what the sheet number is, if there is.
This was actually submitted, this is exactly what you have as your submission, if you'd like to mark it, we can, but this is, this is in your possession.
No, that's fine then.
Okay.
So this was the uh. I'm sorry, Ben.
No, I was just gonna ask if you could just highlight the the change really, uh and as to how we got there.
Of course, so this was the previous design, um it was a little bit more of a quote-unquote modern design. With the heavy use of um casement windows, um the use of brick and a lot of uh aluminum paneling. If I scroll down to. I'm sorry, let me go to. Actually, you know what? Can you still see this, or do I have to?
Yep, yep, no, we can see it.
You can see this, okay, so this was a previous one. I'm just gonna scroll down, I'm sorry. Here you go, so we can see this this screen here?
Yep.
We can, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so this was the previous um. The previous materials that we were going to use, we're kind of use, we're going to use a sort of like beige brick. With some sort of metal paneling for our front elevation. Uh. According, from my knowledge, it seemed like it, the city felt like it was just a little bit too modern for the existing street, because the existing street in itself is a little bit more of a traditional street. In regard to the existing facades, so rather than proposing, you know, more modern casement windows, we went with the. Um we went with the traditional. With more traditional double-hung windows. Um as mentioned, rather than proposing that sort of brown break, we went with the red break because we felt like it matched, it respected the surrounding. Neighbors, surrounding properties a little bit more. And um instead of paneling, we just, again, just kind of took away those sort of modern like elements, just kept a little bit more traditional. Um I understand we have a little bit of a board and baton siding, but as I specified in the. In the um, in the sheet towards in one of our previous sheets. That sort of dormer, that's where if dormer design coming off a sloped roof is something that's found. Throughout the street, so we just wanted to kind of incorporate that here, so. It is um, we just wanted to make it something a little bit more traditional, but also something that stood out, but really respected its sort of surrounding environment.
Perfect, thank you, and then my last question, just so that we can move on to Ms. Wurstel and have her address uh, you know, the the rear yard there, if you could just. Indicate on the site plan what the dimension of the rear yard is. The we're proposing.
Of course. So I'll go ahead and zoom in as well. So our rear yard here is thirty-one point one feet.
Okay, and that was based on, you know, your understanding and your design whereby the required, if you, the required combined front and rear yard had to meet a certain requirement.
Correct, that was under the old, the old zoning standards, correct.
And given that our our front yard is kind of bound by where our neighbors are, that's how you came up with that rear yard.
That's correct, so yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chair, I have nothing further for Mr. Moreno at this point.
Okay, thank you, um. You had great job.
Chairman. May I step in for a second?
Sure.
Um considering we were talking about time of application, I did some looking and uh they will have to uh ask for a variance this evening.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
And Tim, thank you for that, and you know, I. I I'm sorry, I didn't even bring that to your attention, it showed up on our, you know, hour before phone call prepping for the meeting. Um it kind of just pegged everyone, and we thought, you know, maybe it's better to just put it on the record.
That's fine.
Okay, um I have no questions for Mr. Moreno, anybody else? All right, thank you, sir. All right, let's uh move on to Ms. Wurstel then.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think Commissioner Gangadin was trying to ask something, but it cut out on my end.
No, I said I have no questions.
Oh, okay. All right, certainly, so with that, uh Martin, I don't know if you, if you don't mind bringing down your screen, and we can move on.
Of course. Sorry about that.
And just stick around in case there are questions.
Yeah, and thank you all for your time, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I do see Carolyn.
Hey.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
I do.
And can you state and spell your full name for the record?
Carolyn Wurstell, W O R S T E L L.
Ms. Wurstel, good evening, uh I think we saw you a week ago, I can't remember, but uh. I'll double check with you. Your license is current as.
It is, I'm, my license is still in good standing this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you, you are qualified.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, um so as mentioned, um what happened with this site is when we originally were looking at it. We were looking at it under the old standards, and with the new standards, um there are a number of changes, but only one that really affected this. Development, and that was the rear yard setback standard. So this property is located in the R one, or the R three district and multifamily mid-rise district. Um and under the old zoning, the requirement uh was written as a com- combination, you needed a thirty-five feet combined front and rear yard. Plus an additional when you had a deeper lot, this is a deeper lot. Um and when we did that calculations, what we needed was a thirty-one point one foot rear yard setback. When the the um project with the new requirements, um. They changed it, and now it's no longer a combination, it's a straight requirement based on a percentage of lot depth, and that's twenty-five feet. Or front twenty-five percented, twenty-five percent of your depth. In this case, that equates to thirty-five point nine feet rear yard setback, so what we're proposing was thirty-one point one feet, which is what we needed under the old rules. And now it's thirty-five point nine feet, which is what we need under the new rules, so we have a deficit of four point eight feet. Um. Overall, this project is still providing fifty-six point nine feet of combined front and rear yard setback. And that's because we have such a deep front yard setback, we're over twenty-five feet setback from the front lot line. And that's because the buildings on either side of us are also set back that far, um. So it pushes us a lot further back than you would typically find in Jersey City. Um and is not really, is not typical, and is not really what is was generally probably anticipated when the requirements were sent in place. Um overall, this project is still substantially compliant with the new uh requirements. Um you know, we're still um. Uh you know, we've got a front yard setback, the twenty-five feet to match the adjacent, our side yard setbacks are compliant, we have three point. Three point three on one side and combined is five point three. Side yard setbacks, which is conforming, our building height is forty-one point nine feet, four stories, which is conforming. We have a building coverage which is actually substantially less than what is uh permitted, we're at forty-eight percent, we're sixty is permitted. Um our lot coverage as well as is under what's permitted, we're at seventy-three percent, we're eighty percent is permitted. And our front yard landscaping is actually more than you find. Uh opposite of what I'm usually here to tell you, we've got sixty-four percent front yard landscaping, we're sixty percent is required. So overall, this project is substantially compliant, we just have the the um the deviation just for that one rear yard setback. The building itself is still over thirty feet away from the adjacent building to the rear. Um and to the rear of us, um there is actually a structure um on the adjacent property to the rear, which is right on the property line. So there's really not a substantial detriment from that um. Slightly undersized rear yard setback. And I think really overall here, the benefits of this project really outs outweigh the detriments of that, you know, minimal um. Uh variance, you know, it's a new four-unit dwelling that's substantially compliant with the updated R three standards. And we're providing a project that is still well, well under both that lot coverage and that um building coverage. Again, we're twelve percent under what is permitted on building coverage, so really, it is because we have this this odd combination of that substantially. Deeper front yard setback, um that has has. Created this situation, um and with the change, again, where we were compliant, we are now not compliant. Um. This project will advance and promote the um purposes of the municipal land use law. Um consistent with purpose A, um it's an appropriate use, it's permitted for family use, consistent with purpose C, um it'll uh. Guide an appropriate use in development, uh provide adequate light air and open space. Um so all of those setbacks are still going to provide adequate light air and open space. Um you know, we have an appropriate population density, that's a permitted for family dwelling, uh consistent with purpose E. And we're promoting a desirable visual environment, uh consistent with purpose I. Um with this redesign, it's a facade as was been testified, you know, we're looking to incorporate those materials and architectural details. That are a little more historical and more in keeping with the character of the block. Um when looking at the negative criteria, you know, there really isn't a substantial detriment to the general welfare for general welfare or substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. As mentioned, this is a, this is a con- conforming, you know, for family dwelling. Um it's substantially conform con- in compliance with R three standards. We're providing that combined fifty-six point nine foot front and rear yard setback, so that's a substantial setback. Um which results in forty-eight percent coverage, we're sixty percent is permitted. And we have the sixty-four percent front yard landscaping, so we're providing more landscaping in the front yard. Um then is, then you would typically find, so really, I think that this project meets both positive and the negative criteria, and really could, the the variances can be granted. Um consistent with um. Requirements. So if if anyone has a question, I'm happy to. To provide anything else.
Thank you. Ms. Wurstel, um yeah, I have no questions, counsel, do you have anything else for your witness?
Uh, nothing more for my witness at this time.
Okay, anybody else from the board have any questions from Mr. Ms. Wurstel?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you, everybody. All right, counsel, and that's your presentation?
Yeah, I'll reserve my right to sum up, and uh and just before I do that, I I again, I want to apologize to the board, it's certainly not my style to find these last-minute uh. Things, but I I would rather find them ten minutes before the hearing than ten minutes after the hearing, so I I just want to put that on the record, and again, I'll reserve my right to respond to any public.
Okay, agreed, yeah, no worries, it's uh. You know. You made it under the wire, you're fine, um. Okay, um at this time, let's open it up for a public comment, if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling impressed star nine, I see a couple of hands raised already.
Motive Coach MG.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can, yes, let's just get you sworn in, and uh we'll hear your comment.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
Yes.
And state and spell your full name, please.
Full name is Sandra Riley. R I L E Y.
Ms. Riley, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Good evening, um I'd like to. Roughest my remarks by informing the board that our mom is a hundred and four years old, she's lived in this home since nineteen fifty seven, this home at one twenty two Glenwood Avenue. At this point, my husband, MG, my sister India, and I also reside here. I want to just say for the record that we have a number of concerns. The first being pre-construction damage to our property. In December, a contractor was hired by the developer to dig in the street in front of one twenty four Glenwood Avenue. As a result, we have suffered water leakage under the stairs we share with one twenty Glenwood. From the stairway wall in the street in front of our homes around the foundation of our homes. In January, the only had determined that our sewer line had collapsed, water lines were leaking and needed to be replaced. We did not have, we're not aware of these problems until the initial demolition of one twenty four sewer line. We do not feel that we should be responsible for these repairs. Our other concerns are the potential for continuing damage to the structural integrity of our home. We believe there's an incompatibility with the historic character and charm of the neighborhood. The string of homes located from one twenty to one thirty were built in eighteen ninety five by William Coffin and even named the Mayukati. We believe that the proposed design is too tall, too big, too long. And we believe it would significantly disperse, not believe, we know it would decrease our access access to sunlight. On the west side of the house and extending to the backyard. Again, we've been here since nineteen fifty seven, and what about parking? Glenwood Avenue already lacks sufficient parking for its residents. I I just, you know, it, this is a big problem for us. I I would like to ask each of you how you could feel if there were construction in your neighborhood, construction next door to you, which was damaging the structural integrity of your home. Plus in property as well as psychic damage, this is just very upsetting to us. And I'm thankful for the opportunity to put our feelings on the record.
Thank you, Ms. Riley, um, counsel, are you aware of any damage to the property?
I'm I'm not, um, I certainly take those concerns seriously, um, you know, all I can indicate and and Ms. Riley, I certainly. Want to make clear that anything that would be done would have to be done with all permits in place and all inspections in place. Um, you know, if there was work done on the property. I would like to assume it was done with permits, whether that's, uh, you know, working on sewer lines or anything like that. I I'm not aware, unfortunately, Mr. Chair, um, but I I certainly share Ms. Ms. Riley's concerns and will. Let my client know that to take extra care, um. And ensuring that that everything is is followed to a T.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Chairman, last thing, I got a question for for counsel.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is the uh, the foundation of the old building when they dug up the demolition of the building that was existing? Is that adjacent, like, shared foundation to the other properties, or is it there is a, um? Space between each buildings?
Commissioner, I I wish I knew the answer to that, I I don't know, I'm not sure if our architect knows, but I, but if not. I I I don't know, I I don't want to.
Well, just to just to keep in mind to you, um. Okay, the architect, you guys.
Yes, Mr. Yes, Mr. Torres, um, well, I'm not the architect, I'm the lead designer speaking on behalf of Mr. Laporta.
Yes, yes.
In regards to, in regards to the existing survey, which was provided by us, there is space in between um, each property. It's not attached, they're not attached buildings, no, sir.
But just to keep in mind, I see it happen to another property downtown the city or somewhere else where. The um, traditional type of footings and foundations that we think will be in place. Really not, it's just maybe a bedrock, maybe a. Shared poor concrete, um, not traditional for these older buildings. Now, uh, so just to be careful, it takes us. Turn, some other properties that are out there. Um. And, um. Just to be on a safe side, uh, use a lot of caution. Uh, that's what I have to say.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lipsky, I think you had a question also?
Yeah, or a comment, uh, and this is to you, Chair, and I don't know if as a discovering body has any. Uh. Jurisdiction or any say in what ha- has happened or allegedly has happened to the property. Uh, nearby this applicant's, uh. Parcel, uh, but you know, to hear of a a family who's been here this long. And somebody with somebody a hundred and four years old in their golden years. I mean, and and to Mr. Wine's point, if if what he said is accurate, that he had not known about it today, fair enough. And then promising that it won't uh, happen again is great. But that doesn't, you know, give me as a Jersey City resident the warm and fuzzies of what has happened. I mean, I would take a lot of comfort if Mr. Wine would on the record say that he would establish what actually happened. And, uh, you know, see about making whole this uh, long term Jersey City family.
And, uh, for your first part of the uh, comment, Commissioner, we do not have jurisdiction over that. Uh, that would be the building department, I I wish we did, but we do not.
Okay, so maybe for the record, and that's an excellent point, Chairman, I love going through you. Uh, if we could establish what means that, uh, Coach MG, I forget Sandra, whatever her name is.
Ms. Riley.
Riley, excellent, thank you, uh, Chairman. Could seek not, you know, to get into a entanglement. Uh, Mr. Wine is re- is a great attorney, he's been before this board a number of times. Uh, I suspect, uh, he would represent his client through his decency. What could, uh, get done to make this family, uh, whole? Maybe make that a condition, I don't know.
Yeah, Commissioner, at the at the risk of not knowing what whole would look like, and I don't know if there's, you know, if it's a matter for the courts to determine or the building department, all I can say is, I, you know, I comfortably, I tell all my my clients whether or not. You know, this board discusses their applications or another board in another municipality, that, you know, your job as a developer is to be a good neighbor. Um, it's it's, it's incumbent upon you, I mean, if you're, if unless unless you're somebody who plans to develop one. One development and then escape to another country, I presume, you know, you want to be a good neighbor, and so I do always advise my clients, and I will do so now. Um, on the record and then behind the scenes as well, that obviously anything he does should be coordinated with all the appropriate agencies. To the extent possible, he should communicate with his neighbor, um, about, you know, construction times and that, and I I. I recognize that, you know, it's it's, it would be a burden to to knock on her door every morning and say construction starting in ten minutes. But some type of, you know, notice as to perhaps when construction might begin and to ensure that it's overseen by the appropriate authorities and professionals. Um, that that I'm certainly happy to do, and I would do that anyways, whether or not you put that on the record.
Excellent, and so in my world, uh, it's pretty simple without getting overly complicated, getting whole is is your client. Through whoever him or her and or their representative. Uh, ascertains to the extent he or she may have caused whatever damage. And just say, you know, whether it's through insurance or out of pocket. Here's a good neighborly deed. Uh, I'll restore you to where you were, if not, you know what, my mom taught me, you leave a place better than you found it.
Agreed, absolutely agree, um, but once again, it's that jurisdiction isn't in front of us, but counsel, we appreciate, uh. You know, your best effort on this and your client's best effort, we do, uh. Preach being good neighbors, of course, but, um. Again, that that would fall in the building department to, uh, enforce any any damages. Okay, if we, let's move on with public comment, I see another hand raised.
We have Sharon and Nathan McCormick.
Hi, who will be talking first?
Good evening, um, this is Nathan McCormick.
Okay, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name, please.
Yes, Nathan McCormick, it's N A T H A N. McCormick is M A C C O R. M A C K. From one court reporter to another, good evening.
Mr. McCormick, good evening, um. There's another person on the screen with you, uh, is she going to be testifying as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's, uh, handle your testimony separately, so, uh, Mr. McCormick, we have three minutes from you and then we'll swear on the other witness.
Thank you and good evening, and thank for the opportunity to to be heard tonight. Um, so my wife Sharon and I, um. Have restored, um, and one of the eighteen ninety five. Uh, homes that Ms. Riley was speaking of that are part of the historic. Um, stretch of houses, one of six houses built in eighteen ninety five. Um. Um, one of which, uh, is the up up for debate tonight, basically. So. Um. The first point I wanted to make is, um, as much as I understand the need, um, for this property to be put to use and for. Um, for for just that, my, the first concern that I had when I saw the design was the depth of the, um, of of the building. Um, the setback is the the biggest concern to me for the sole reason that. Um, Glenwood Avenue on this block, um, is on a hill. And we had about a foot of water in our basement after Hurricane Ida. And so being towards the bottom of this hill, just a few doors away from this proposed project. Uh, my concern is, uh, mostly with the permeable surface area. And I'm concerned that. In on this block, as Ms. Riley stated, many people, you know, parking is very tough. Most people who had a front yard chose to get rid of it or a parking, you know, for a driveway, so when it does rain. There's really not much area for absorption. Being directly downhill from this project is concerning, and in addition. Um, next Thursday before the zoning board will be a project by the same developer. Right next door to us with, I assume, about the same footprint. So we are very concerned about the depth of the project. Um, and what that would mean for the groundwater absorption. Um, but thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCormick, and, uh, let's bring up your other witness.
Mr. Chair, did you want me to address that comment, because I think it was a good one, and I think we can, or do you want to hear from, uh, Ms. McCormick first?
Let's hear from Ms. McCormick, and I assume, uh, we may have similar concerns, so let's, uh, address them together.
Sure.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
Yes.
And state and spell your full name for the record.
My name is Sharon McCormack, it's spelled S H I R I N. M A C. C O R M A C K.
Ms. McCormick, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Good evening, um, I wanted to thank you for your times tonight, and I wanted to, uh, express some concerns as a resident of Jersey City for fourteen years now. I, um. I love this neighborhood, I I uh, love Jersey City, I lived downtown at the historic Dixon Mills for many years, and then in more recent years up here where my husband and I have. Painstakingly lovingly restored, uh, this eighteen ninety five treasure of a home in a string of six homes built by William W. Coffin in eighteen ninety five. And, um, I just, I find this neighborhood very beautiful. It has historic integrity and, you know, in a time when so many people are coming in and just raising everything down rather than restoring, um, beauty that is there already. Um, I just think it's a, it's it's a shame, um. This, we're lucky that we're in, uh, this pocket, um, on this block of some very intact, um, history with a beautiful, you know, locally sourced stone wall. And the Queen Anne architecture. And, um, I do have concerns about the new building, um, to go over them briefly. Um, higher and deeper, uh, proposed plans will mean less sunlight and a lot more shadow on our property and neighbor properties. I'm also concerned that the height is a lot more than two feet higher than the existing structure to go from two and a half stories of the existing home. To four stories, and if you just even look at the images of the proposal, um, it looks a lot fuller than that. Um, so I wanted to know about the height accuracy. Also, greater population density with this construction would mean more noise and less parking, um. New plans are being planned to be in modern, uh, in in a historical style, but they are quite modern, um, they are not Queen Anne, they will not match. The, um, surrounding historical character of the block and the neighborhood. Um, I'm not sure what the plans are for the stone wall that is, uh, sidewalk, front facing along this whole row of homes. And, um. But, um, to go a little deeper, the historic preservation specialist, uh, letter did say that this block has largely intact, and I'm quoting his intact historic streets. Streetscape with few modern intrusions, staff recommends that any new construction be compatible with the scale, the form, the setbacks, the heights. And historic character of the neighborhood and that and the stone wall fronting the road, Queen Ancestral Houses should be retained as part of a historic streetscape. To me, faux brick and vinyl siding is not, um, historical. Um, and I I know that, you know, my husband and I renovated our own home, and we found that when we removed the vinyl siding, there was beautiful, uh, cedar original wooden shingle and clapboard underneath. Um, the existing home at one twenty four Glenwood still has that Palladian window in the attic and the second story, uh, light window, they're merely just covered up and actually being protected and preserved, which is fortunate if if we can retain them. Um, by the vinyl siding. And.
That that was your three minutes, Ms. McCormick, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Can I add one more note, please?
Four seconds, please.
I'd love to see what's happening with the preservation of the front facade up at forty five, forty one to forty five Highland happen at one twenty four Glenwood, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, a lot to unpack there, but, uh, but I'm happy to respond and have my team respond, I I want to start by suggesting. Um, the first and foremost, you know, the presentation you've seen this evening, and this is really to, uh, to the McCormicks. As well, you know, the 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 bulk of the building, um, again, with the exception of that deviation that came to light and that we're, we we added to our application. The bulk of the building complies with the R three standards, and that's, that's, you know, what your governing body and and this planning board have determined to be appropriate for the R three now. Before we can file an application, we do have to apply to the Historic Preservation Commission on any application for demolition. Um, in order to receive what's called the determination of significance, which in fact is, I believe, what you were reading from specifically, and that determination of significance. Comes with the demo permit that a a allows this property to be demolished, and with that in mind, you know. This board and the governing body have felt that the R three zone, um, is entitled to have a little bit more density, uh, where we're proposing a compliant four units. Is entitled to have a little bit more height, where you're entitled up to, I believe it's forty two feet, and we're underneath that. Um, we're also, you know, they don't want parking, quite honestly, if you actually read the text of the ordinance, um, three and four families are actually the smallest. Density permitted in the R three, there's an argument to be made that one and two families are actually not permitted under the new R three standards. But nevertheless, they the this this board and the governing body felt that parking is not something that they would desire to see. The goal of this application since the inception, and again, with the exception of the one deviation that has come to light. At the eleventh hour, the goal was to construct a building that complies with the R three. Standards, I want to touch on another couple of issues as well, you know, the design of the facade. To your point, Ms. McCormick, you you you're never, you're never, when you do something new, you're never going to get something that is eighteen ninety five, that's just, you know, you can try and get the design, unfortunately. You know, new is always going to be new and not eighteen ninety five. What the architect has done quite painstakingly, really in the last couple of weeks after multiple rounds of comments from the councilman's office, who shared those design concerns. Was to actually pivot and change the facade to better take on the aesthetics and characteristics of some of the neighboring styles, which which really are beautiful in and of themselves, and you saw some of the dormers, you saw the changed material. You saw the, uh, the the window pattern, um, you saw the bay window that did not previously exist, so I think that's that's, you know, this architect has done, um, or this designer through the architect has done. You know, everything he can responsive to to bring that into focus. And then regarding the wall in the front, it's a good point, um, I'm glad you brought it up, I think we missed that in our testimony, that's one of the elements as to why we're maintaining that front yard setback. We're not only keeping the wall that's there, that retaining wall, we're actually improving it, restoring it, and bringing that walkway into, uh, into. and bringing that walkway into uh into into better condition because it needs a whole lot of repair. And that all takes place within that twenty-five point eight foot setback in the front. We are doing that. We recognize that that's a nice element that exists today. It helps, you know, the topography is something unique on this property. And uh and our goal has always been to do that, not to not to provide parking. I think you mentioned people are knocking down, um, are just installing front yard parking. The chairman can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you can do that without filing for a permit or coming before this board. And it's my understanding that the goal in a lot of areas in the city is to prohibit that type of development and putting parking in the front, both from an aesthetic perspective, but also from a drainage perspective, which you mentioned. So some of the uh the couple items that Mr. Moreno mentioned as well to help with the drainage, there's going to be a rain garden on the property. There is, we are, we are well, well beneath the impervious coverage that's permitted on the property. We have green roof components added to the added to the building. Um, we have stormwater management added to the site. So these are issues that I agree, I live down downhill myself of some neighbors and have and very familiar with flooding issues. But I think the testimony you've heard and the plans that have been really well engineered will only make this a better condition from a drainage perspective than what you see today. So I think, and Mr. Chair, I'm sorry if I missed anything, those were the notes that I had to respond to the McCormicks.
All right. Thank you, counsel. And I I do uh, I do want to agree with you on the front yard parking. Um, it's not something I like to see. Uh, you certainly would have to come in front of this board and ask to uh have front yard parking added. And I don't think that we've ever approved that request. So if we could, uh, that being said, let's move on with public comment.
Noted G S Stafford.
Yes, hello. Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Did you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Good evening.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And sir, could you state and spell your full name?
Uh, Julian, that's J U L I A N Brantley, B R A N T L E Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Brantley, um, are you, there's another person on your screen. Are you both going to be testifying tonight?
No, just decide, decide.
Okay, so um we have three minutes for you then, Mr. Brantley.
Okay, uh, going back to uh what Ms. Riley said, the city has in fact uh come in and uprooted the street with permits and everything being said. However, they also repavement the area, but now because of the continuation of cars running over it, I don't know if a water had burst, as she said, a pipe had burst, but now there's continuation of water coming from the street. So I'm not sure, as she said before, circling back to to what she said, would they be able to do the same thing if that was the case? Or would that be the same situation? Uh, also moving forward from that, with this building being, if I'm correct, is being taken down and a new one is being put up, I do have a strong health concern as far as my grandma goes, which is sitting right next to me, as well as uh Ms. Edwards, who would be my neighbor of Sandra Riley. With all the dust and everything and the breeze, most of them have asthma and breathing problems. So that does create a big concern for me as far as it goes. Also, just like you said, as far as the loud noises and everything else being early, my grandma, and I I don't know if you want to disclose this, she has tinnitus. So that will also create a problem as far as the noise goes. So I'm trying to figure out what would be done if that was the case. And cleanup goes as as well. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Brantley.
Thank you, Mr. Brantley.
All very valid concerns. Again, it sounds like the city might have done some work in the street, which might have been what Ms. Riley was referencing as well. You know, anything, I I'll just reiterate, anything done by our, by my client will be done under all permits. And to Commissioner Lipsky's point, will be done in the, with the best possible care and attention towards being a good neighbor. Um, you know, and and with respect to some of the health concerns of dust and noise and all that, I mean, unfortunately, construction is going to ultimately cause those issues. You know, we will again do our best to be good neighbors and follow all available protocol. And if the board has any recommendations as to protocol that I'm unaware of, we're certainly happy to entertain that. Um, but everything will follow all ordinances of record and and comply with the law.
All right. Thank you, counsel.
Promoted Eric Carter.
Up here.
Did you raise your right hand to be sworn? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state and spell your full name.
Sure, I'm Eric, E R I C, Carter, C A R T E R.
Mr. Carter, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Good evening. I probably won't take three minutes, but I appreciate you giving me the time. Um, I'm a resident of Glenwood Avenue. I'm a little bit further down the hill. But those, that row of houses are so beautiful and historic for quality of life. As as a neighbor, they're beautiful to see and I understand change. I understand progress. Um, I just looked at the design that you presented tonight and wish you could get a little closer to what is already happening there. Um, I think my other challenge is the size. I've been a Jersey City resident for over almost thirty years now. Um, one of the reasons that I moved to this neighborhood recently was that I lived on Montgomery Street downtown in Van Vors Park. And the population density is really, it it changes um your quality of life. It just got too crowded, too busy. And when I see a single or two-story house moving to a four-story house, I see that change start to happen here and it doesn't make me feel good. Just wanted to put that out there. Um, I think that, you know, one of the reasons that this neighborhood wa- was desirable to me was that there weren't a lot of large dwellings. There were still single-family homes, two-family homes. It felt like a neighborhood. Um, and I I hate to see more encroachment. There are a few large apartment buildings at the top of the block, but you know, I'd love this, I'd love to see a a two or three family home there. The the height of this, you know, when you talk about your new height is forty-one point nine and yeah, you're allowed forty-two, but it's still dwarfing the other houses in that historic row. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carter. We have uh
I would like to stay on if possible.
Sure, um, if you could, Mr. Ronan, uh, please just confirm that you were already sworn in tonight and are still under oath.
Yes, I was already sworn in and I still on under oath.
Okay.
I'm gonna be quick. Um, thank you all. So I just want to point out that we didn't see any reference to what was happening to the the trees, the hedging, the greenery that is already existing on that site. Obviously, if you're trying to push back to turn up a lot of the light from the neighboring product for properties, it's going to have a deficit of light that's going to impact the greenery in our neighborhood. There's very few trees in our neighborhood, unfortunately, and you're also going to probably impact the tree in front. So I do want to ask what is happening to maintain the greenery uh of that site. And I do agree with what others have said, the building's a little too big for its its neighbors. And uh what I do approve of development in this neighborhood, I think it's got to be managed to be appropriate to the neighborhood. And I also want to point out, um, some of the addresses, at least the one that depicted our particular house were incorrect on your um on your documents earlier on.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ronan. We appreciate it.
Sure. And uh and Mr. Ronan and Mr. Carter to that as well, greenery. I'm happy to have our architect re-show what we're doing. At the end of the day, that the rear yard will be all greenery. It will be a combination of uh of lawn and trees and shrubs. In the front as well, there will be, uh, there's actually not currently much by way of shrubbery at all. We are significantly increasing, as Ms. Worstel and Mr. Moreno indicated, the landscaping in the front yard as well as just cleaning it up generally. And just again, you know, concerns are heard, but to to reiterate the building massing, the mass of the building, again, it's it's permitted under the R three standards and I I don't say that to be dismissive. I I I really say that to stress um to the public that, you know, this is ultimately what the R three contemplates um in terms of, in terms of scale of the and massive development.
All right. Thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to public comment, please.
Noted Stephen D. Janelle Esquire.
You are testifying as an attorney. I do not need to swear you in, but I don't know.
Uh, I will, I'm happy to be sworn in if you so desire.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And state and spell your full name for the record.
Uh, S T E V E N. My last name is J A N E L.
Mr. Janelle, good evening. We have three minutes. Where are you, sir?
Thank you. I was brought into um at the behest of some of the homeowners on Glenwood Avenue. Uh, one of the issues that they were concerned about is the integrity of the of the neighborhood. I think it's been established that the neighborhood style is Queen Anne. Queen Anne is a Victorian style, but it has more specific and unique features. Um, Queen Anne features an asymmetrical exteriors with decorative trim. Uh, wraparound porches are very common. Our towers, turrets and multi-colored pallets. When we he- hear Mr. Moreno testify um with regard to A two, which was a rendering he did as to the property that's proposed, his comments were, quote, it's a more traditional work, excuse me, more traditional look. He spoke of lots of aluminum panels. He described it as modern. And more importantly, uh, from my client's perspective is he described it as uh looking as, quote, something that stood out, unquote. Well, I would suggest to um the panel that it it certainly does stand out because it doesn't fit in. Um, if it's a sore thumb, it doesn't look anything like Queen Anne architecture and it doesn't look like anything in the particular row of homes in which it would be located, uh, without even getting into the size and scope of the project. Uh, I refer to the uh, to the memo which was issued by the Historic Commission, which specifically says the building on one twenty-four Glenwood Avenue is a wood-framed, two-and-a-half-story, two-bay, single-family residence with Queen Anne-style influences and its asymmetrical fenestration, cross-gabled roof, staggered front-facing gables, two-story protruding bay windows and raised entrance. Okay, the last comment is the block of Glenwood Avenue between West Side Avenue and JFK Boulevard has a largely intact historic streetscape with few modern intrusion. Staff recommends that any new construction be compatible with the scale, form, setbacks, heights and historic characteristic of the neighborhood and that the stone wall fronting the row of the Queen Anne-style houses should be retained as part of the historic streetscape. Um, I I would suggest to the panel that this is about about as far from the recommendation of the Historic Commission as you could possibly get. Um, based on that alone, I I can't see this really fitting what was intended for this particular property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janelle. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Janelle. And and if I may, Mr. Chair, you know, thank you, Mr. Janelle. A lot of what you said, quite honestly, you know, you you referenced a lot of the design characteristics that have actually been integrated um within this property and I'm I'm just reiterating what you said and what's in the report that you referenced. For example, it's uh what we had asymmetrical fenestration, cross-gabled roof, staggered front-facing gambles, two-story protruding bay window, raised entrance. These are features that if you look at the plans, um, Mr. Moreno actually redesign, or Mr. Moreno through Mr. Laporta redesigned because these were some of the comments that Councilman Bogianos' office had shared with us as well about changing from what we had proposed as a, not not that I want to go down the road of calling it a bay-owned box, but something that was more of a straight rectangular box-shaped building. These are some of the design features that we've integrated. In fact, the city of Jersey City has within its land development order ordinance, uh residential design standards. And at the risk of boring the board and going through that and recognizing that they are subjective in a lot of ways in nature, um, I believe that uh that that we've accomplished that. But ne- nevertheless, um, you know, I have the ability to text my architect and if the board feels that there's a particular feature or particular design or particular element to the facade design that is either desirable or not desirable, it's it's fungible. I mean, we can, we can make changes to the design. We just felt that in conjunction, after making the changes requested by the councilman's office and uh and in conjunction with this report, that what we came was actually satisfactory, although recognizing fully, as I mentioned before, it is somewhat subjective. I I do, I do appreciate that. But again, we are open if there are specific suggestions with that, that is, that is something we can work with.
Okay, thank you, counsel. All right, let's continue with public comment.
Um, so we've already promoted Coach MG. Um, do we want to promote them again?
Um, I would because she did mention there were multiple people in the household and Ms. Riley's uh name when we brought her up certainly wasn't Coach MG, so maybe there's somebody else in there. But uh if it is uh Ms. Riley again, we can only allow you to testify once per application. But if there's somebody else on, we certainly could hear them.
Yes, good evening.
Did you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
State and spell your full name, please.
MG, actually is George, G E O R G E Riley, R I L E Y.
Mr. Riley, good evening. We have three minutes. Where are you, sir?
Okay, I won't take the full three minutes. I just had a question to what Attorney Wine uh said. He said that people are not looking for parking. You know, you're proposing a fourteen-bedroom edifice next to us and on the block. And how is that not going to, I mean, are you saying that nobody's going to come in with a car? We already have issues with parking. We have St. Peter's University here. We have three apartment buildings up the street. In fact, the parking is so bad, you need a permit to park from three P M to nine P M just for residents. And after that, you know, when everybody comes in, you know, it's it's just insane. I was just questioning when you said nobody's looking for parking. You know, I mean, that's, I don't understand that. You know, unless they want to ride uh bikes, you know, we have the city bikes up the street that they can ride, but I'm not sure, you know. I just question that. Thank you.
Sure. And Mr. Riley, I certainly apologize if I misspoke. I don't think that I did. Um, what I suggested is that it's my understanding that the the governing body is not looking for parking here in the R three zone and so much so that they they don't have a parking requirement. It's not prohibited. We could, we could propose parking on this property. Although my understanding from working with city planning on this and actually hearing some other comments about drainage concerns about adding driveways and 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 impervious coverage, you know, we have the availability, we have the the coverage to play with. It's something we'd be permitted to do, but ultimately what I what I intended, and again, I'm sorry if I misspoke or if it was misunderstood. I'm not suggesting people in the neighborhood don't appreciate parking. I I I'm suggesting that what this ordinance has looked to do, what the R three looks to do, is not necessarily have parking.
Back to you, Chairman.
I'm sorry, I've been speaking for like forty-five seconds and had no idea my uh my camera was um, so uh if anybody else is here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Chairman seeing no others wishing to speak from the public, I move to close the public session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Um, I'm not sure whose this was. Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, um, given the uh the realization of a rear yard setback uh variance that's required and uh that city planning did not receive um a rendering until this meeting, I believe, uh, because the plans that when Mr. Wine, Mr. Wine's been pretty open and and working with city planning. However, I think, given the way things are presented tonight and seeing the rendering as it is, I think it would be best if if Mr. Wine uh will be willing to to carry to a uh future meeting so that city planning has more time to look at the uh design of the project. Again, given the rendering that was shown to us tonight.
I have no problem with that. Counsel, uh, Mr. Wine, are you in agreement?
Yes, I'll I'll offer two options. That's certainly one of them and uh and on its face, I don't have an issue with that. Um, the other option I would offer and and I would, I wouldn't be advocating on behalf of my client in a good capacity if I didn't at least offer this. Understanding that these residential design standards and hearing understanding that these residential design standards and hearing the comments from the public, which appeared honestly all related to the design. We think we accomplished it, but recognizing that others may not feel so. You know, there's always going to be a lot of cooks in the kitchen, and I don't think at the end of the day, everybody, you know, might look at this and say, this is what I had envisioned here. So what I would what I would request, if it's okay with the board, and if not, I'm certainly happy to to go with what Mr. Krail said, would be if the board is so inclined to approve the project with with respect to the massing and, you know, the one deviation that we have, then I would certainly agree as a condition to work with Mr. Krail and all of city planning to come up with a design that would be that that they feel is appropriate for this block. I have no issue with that.
I would I would have an issue with that, considering there's no notice on record right now that shows a variance. I think they need to come back. Currently, there is no notice out there that shows a variance that's being requested.
Chairman, I would also strongly agree with Tim in the sense that I'll reach out to my councilman, who I live in Ward C. Bojiano and his eight Pam Andys to see if they could follow up since Mr. Wine has referenced that to see if how we could facilitate good community relationships with the Riley's and making sure that an assessment of alleged damage is ascertained.
Commissioner, I would strongly advise against that unless you were willing to recuse yourself on the next application that we had.
Chairman, I was just about to say the same.
Yeah, we we can't have conversations about this application outside of the meeting, Commissioner. That would be, you know, like I said, if you want to have those conversations, you would have to recuse on the next time this application came up. Mr. Wine.
Can I just at least ask Councilman Bojiano to reference the record and without saying anything?
Commissioner, you cannot speak to anybody regarding the.
Yeah, we really shouldn't be speaking to anybody about it.
Mr. Chair, I think I think if I may, I think a good I think what would accomplish what I think Commissioner Lipsky is attempting to do without causing any potential issue would be if 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 the board was inclined to work with the stipulation I just made, for example. You know, we can include Councilman Bojiano's office with respect to any of those design reviews as well. That would be a condition of, I mean, that would be, I think permitted. I'll defer to Mr. Alampi, but I think that would be totally appropriate, and you know, they can solicit.
We we are gonna either vote or not vote on the application as presented to us tonight. We are not going to leave this up to chance later on down the road.
Fair enough.
We approve what's in front of us or deny what's in front of us. This board's responsibility to design the project for you. So with that said, counsel, we could either roll the dice tonight on this vote, or if you're willing to come back at another time with a redesign or or not, you know.
Sure. Mr. Chair, would you give me two minutes to call my client and confirm?
Mr. One, before you do that, Chairman, let's let's be clear on what we're we're asking for. So first, with respect to the notice, it appeared to be in order. It now is clear that there's a rear yard variance that was not noticed. However, there is the catch-all language in the notice. So counsel has to deal with that issue. However, he decides to deal with it, the board has taken jurisdiction and started the application. With respect to carrying the application because the rendering was submitted outside of the timeframe, as I understood what was being asked was for planning to look at the rendering and for planning to discuss the architectural elements. Now, I am sure one of the things that counsel is going to do is he's going to reach out to the neighbor to discuss some issues up to and including the architectural component. But planning wants to review those and see if in planning's opinion they were appropriate under the rubric. I think that's what Mr. Krail was was articulating, so this is not going to become a free-for-all where everybody gets to design the building. That's not the intent of what's being requested by planning or what councils agreed, so I want everybody to understand that aspect of it. And counsel, I would I would say we give you two seconds to to talk to your client, but that's that's where I am, Chairman.
Thank you, counsel, and and I'll I'll echo what you said regarding notice. You know, that's the reason we have the catch-all in the notice for situations like this and similar, and the board coming up with variances that weren't flagged or or issues coming up. That's why the catch-all is there, so I'll defer to to count to Mr. Alampi. But I would suggest that, you know, if we are to carry this, you know, to two weeks, which would not give us time to renotice anyways, that I would I would ask that Mr. Alampi be comfortable and his board be comfortable that our notice is in fact compliant and and provides jurisdiction. That's the entire, there's case law on it, but that's the entire purpose of the catch-all, which I believe should satisfy that. As to the design element, and then if I will ask for for just a minute and a half to call my client, but as to the design, again, I agree with Mr. Alampi to use his term free-for-all. Unfortunately, as I indicated before, you're probably never going to come to a consensus with absolutely everybody as to how a facade ultimately looks. And ultimately, a property owner has some degree of entitlement to choose how he feels it is appropriate, or she feels it is appropriate, to design their building so long as planning staff or zoning staff and the board feel that it is compliant with the ordinance's guidelines. So, you know, to counsel's point, I would definitely, assuming my client agrees to to carry this, which I I would expect, but I'll ask for a minute. I would ask that what this board understands is that we would speak with Mr. Krail regard, and if Mr. Krail would like to bring anybody else in, that's fine. But regarding this, to kind of keep it, you know, level-headed and well-thought-out and a productive conversation.
All right, thank you, counsel, and you're more than welcome to come in in two weeks, but we will not be here. Our next meeting is on April fourth.
I I meant next week, actually. I'm sorry.
That, yeah, next week is out of the question. So, yeah, the the earliest we could get you in is April fourth. I I would like to give Bridget a five-minute break any minute now, so I'll address, I think Commissioner Lipsky had a a question or a comment.
The the point that Tim brought up about the prompting of a variance, so the catch-all would be an umbrella or supersede that?
So the catch-all is in their notice. An applicant doesn't i- if they don't believe they have any variances in their notice, there's a catch-all that says if the board or planning staff deems that there is a variance in the application that they find, that this notice also covers that. That being said, I like to know personally if there are variances when I'm reviewing an application and you know, we go through these applications before each meeting, and it it's a heavy lift. And if I'm not looking for a variance, I I'm not digging through your plans to find the variance. It's not my responsibility to do that, especially given that we have three meetings in a row, three weeks in a row. I I'm not digging through, you know, the master plan if if I don't think I have to, if there's no variance listed on the application. So, you know, I like to know what I'm getting into when I review a plan. But like I said, counsel, the ball's in your court. We'll take a five-minute break. Roll the dice. You can roll the dice.
Chairman, thanks to this Commissioner Torres. Okay, will we just make a suggestion then, as we talked about this for now for a little bit of time? We don't design the building, but there are standards for that, and I think this is going all over the place with designing the building and the balance.
Yeah.
We're getting off the subject of the balance and what's in the design, which they try to do that best, so let's take that five-minute break and let counsel do what he has to do, and hopefully after the five-minute break, we solve this today.
Sure.
One thing off the list would be nice.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I would hate to waste the last. I don't, I didn't check the time when we started this, but we don't have time to waste.
So just in sum, so for this five minutes I could go over, what exactly is the nature of the variance? Some, you know.
So four-foot rear yard.
Thank you. Thanks, counsel.
Okay, so it's eight fifty-seven. Let's come back at nine oh two, please.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
I would have an issue with that, considering there's no notice on record right now that shows a variance. I think they need to come back. Currently, there is no notice out there that shows a variance that's being requested.
Chairman, I would also strongly agree with Tim in the sense that I'll reach out to my councilman, who I live in Ward C. Bojiano and his eight Pam Andys to see if they could follow up since Mr. Wine has referenced that to see if how we could facilitate good community relationships with the Riley's and making sure that an assessment of alleged damage is ascertained.
Commissioner, I would strongly advise against that unless you were willing to recuse yourself on the next application that we had.
Chairman, I was just about to say the same.
Yeah, we we can't have conversations about this application outside of the meeting, Commissioner. That would be, you know, like I said, if you want to have those conversations, you would have to recuse on the next time this application came up. Mr. Wine.
Can I just at least ask Councilman Bojiano to reference the record and without saying anything?
Commissioner, you cannot speak to anybody regarding the.
Yeah, we really shouldn't be speaking to anybody about it.
Mr. Chair, I think I think if I may, I think a good I think what would accomplish what I think Commissioner Lipsky is attempting to do without causing any potential issue would be if 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 the board was inclined to work with the stipulation I just made, for example. You know, we can include Councilman Bojiano's office with respect to any of those design reviews as well. That would be a condition of, I mean, that would be, I think, permitted. I'll defer to Mr. Alampi, but I think that would be totally appropriate, and you know, they can solicit.
We we are gonna either vote or not vote on the application as presented to us tonight. We are not going to leave this up to chance later on down the road.
Fair enough.
We approve what's in front of us or deny what's in front of us. It's the board's responsibility to design the project for you. So with that said, counsel, we could either roll the dice tonight on this vote, or if you're willing to come back at another time with a redesign or or not, you know.
Sure. Mr. Chair, would you give me two minutes to call my client and confirm?
Mr. One, before you do that, Chairman, let's let's be clear on what we're we're asking for. So first, with respect to the notice, it appeared to be in order. It now is clear that there's a rear yard variance that was not noticed. However, there is the catch-all language in the notice. So counsel has to deal with that issue. However, he decides to deal with it, the board has taken jurisdiction and started the application. With respect to carrying the application because the rendering was submitted outside of the timeframe, as I understood what was being asked was for planning to look at the rendering and for planning to discuss the architectural elements. Now, I am sure one of the things that counsel is going to do is he's going to reach out to the neighbor to discuss some issues up to and including the architectural component. But planning wants to review those and see if in planning's opinion they were appropriate under the rubric. I think that's what Mr. Krail was was articulating, so this is not going to become a free-for-all where everybody gets to design the building. That's not the intent of what's being requested by planning or what councils agreed, so I want everybody to understand that aspect of it. And counsel, I would I would say we give you two seconds to to talk to your client, but that's that's where I am, Chairman.
Thank you, counsel, and and the board is neutral on it. It's it's totally your call. It's not the board's recommendation to do anything at this point. So.
And we're not here to design a building.
No, no, we're certainly not here.
Not to decide.
You know, we're just here to vote on what's presented to us, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Tim, do you think we can get this on the fourth? Or or counsel, you know, you obviously have to go back and forth with Tim. I don't know what frame you're looking for here. I mean, obviously, you're going to ask me for last week, but.
Is that Mr. Chair's last week an option?
I I last week was way too late, too, so.
Yeah, so I would say like this, I mean, Mr. Krail, as he alluded to, we've we've been open line of communication this whole way, you know. We'll send him these plans first thing in the morning. You know, I'll work with him, and again, if he has any recommendations, I don't personally see an issue with April fourth.
You know, to the extent it's some massive facade design overhaul that's recommended, you know, I know Martin works pretty quickly. So I, I, I'm comfortable with April fourth.
Okay.
Mr. Ryan, I'll leave it to you whether you renotice and call out that variance since you're going out to April fourth with enough time to do it. Your application.
Okay. Yeah, note, noted, definitely.
Tim, are you comfortable with the fourth?
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with the fourth. I just wanna make one more quick comment. It's just that this needs to be looked at considering the rendering was revealed basically today. And given this, the, the comments by historic preservation, even though it's just a determination of significance, it still has significance. And that's why, even though this board does not decide, decide design, it needs to take into account these kind of situations. That's what we're doing here. We're doing our due diligence. In this situation, something is brought up at the last second, it needs to be taken seriously, considering there's many people, the public, that are upset about this. And we need to do due diligence. And that's what we're doing right now. Just wanted to say that.
Okay, understood. So let's carry this. With testimony taken, case P two two one nine seven, minor site plan for one twenty four Glenwood Ave. Let's take this to a date certain of April fourth with testimony taken. Counsel, it's once again up to you if you want to renotice for that, including the variance or not. But that is this board's action tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would just ask that you put on the record to, if it's okay to preserve notice, and I will speak to my client about renoticing, but just if you can preserve it anyways, that would be, I think.
We're in an open application, counsel. This is with testimony taken, we're carrying this conversation forward. I believe the application is legally in front of us right now, and I don't know that, you know, notice has already been entered into, uh, entered into the record. So I don't know that we would be able to preserve notice for something that's open currently. Santo, do you agree, disagree? I'm not a lawyer, obviously.
Oh, you're doing a good job of playing one tonight.
He does a good job.
Better off, you're better off for it, Mr. Chair.
The matter is carried, the notice is preserved as the notice has been accepted by the board. However, counsel will determine because his notice does not have the variance identified specifically, if he would like to renotice, that's for him to determine as the app.
Thank you, counsel. So I appreciate the board's time this evening. I, I, again, just, just to indicate, I certainly did not intend to pull a fast one on anyway, on anyone, and I appreciate the board's time and look forward to hopefully concluding this positively on April fourth.
Okay, thank you, counsel. All right, if we could, let's move on to item fourteen. It's case P two three dash zero two three, conditional use for classified cannabis retailer micro business. Thank you all. P five, Christopher Columbus Drive.
Hello, counsel. My name's Andrew Sick. I don't, this is my first time before you, so excuse any slip ups on procedure. But, but, but again, my name is Andy Sick. I'm a member of the law firm, Mr. Cannabis Law. We represent a, an applicant before you, a cannabis boutique by Greenhouse, which is looking to open up a cannabis retail store in Jersey City, owned and operated by Julissa Bonilla, and we have the architect here with us as well. So judging by, by, by other reviews of how these proceedings have gone, you generally just want to go to what the architect has to say. So, but I'm happy to interact in any way you want. So I have the architect available right here, and what we're gonna be doing is he's having a bit of an issue with Zoom, so I'm gonna be controlling the, the Zoom screen and just, you know, transitioning between the different, the different, the different architectural drawings and plans from, from, from that perspective. So if you have any questions for me right now, I'm happy to do that. And if not, I can just turn it over to our architect.
All right, thank you.
So let's mark your notice. I am receipt of an affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at one twenty five Christopher Columbus Drive. It does appear to be in order. We're gonna mark it as A one for purposes of the record. And counsel, just for your edification, anything that you're gonna show that was not submitted, color rendering, et cetera, et cetera, we're gonna mark those as a two, a three, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, thank you, counsel. And Mr. Sick, I do have one question, completely unrelated. I didn't get a chance to write it down yet. What was the name of the firm? It was brilliant, whatever I heard.
Yeah, the name of the firm is Mr. Cannabis Law.
I love it. I love it so much. Okay, let's, uh, let's proceed then. Now, let's bring your architect up. We'll swear him in and qualify him. Or her, or they, or them.
His, his name's John, and John, if you could hop on the screen.
I wish I could. I'm plugged in, but it doesn't seem to be working. It's a separate camera. Then my computer does not have one.
I can just differ the, uh, second. A dunce. Screen shared too.
We just need to swear in your, your professional, Mr. Sick.
Yeah, yeah, he's apparently, he's not able to pull himself up visually. Is that all right? If you just swear him in verbally?
That's fine.
Okay, John, so John's here. So John, if you could, you know, just.
Raise my right hand.
Okay, well, I can't swear in anybody that I can't see, but I could ask Mr. Ligori to state and spell his full name.
Sure, it's Sean Ligori, L I G U O R I.
And Mr. Ligori, since we cannot see you, we're gonna need you to give us your business address as well as your professional license number.
Sure. My address is ninety six Edison Avenue in Nutley, New Jersey. And my architectural license number is one four three six two in New Jersey.
Are you licensed in other jurisdictions as well?
Um, no, just New Jersey.
Okay. Chairman, back to you. I will accept the representation of the gentleman that he is who he says he is, and that he is a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, and that he's providing testimony under oath here this evening. He's having a technical difficulty of turning on his camera. So with that, Chairman, if you require additional voir dire, Mr. Sick, I am sure will be happy to do that with the witness.
All right, thank you, counsel. And I did have jury duty a few times. I know what voir dire means, so. Good. Mr. Ligori, if you could, just give us a bit of background. You're, you stated you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Your license is current tonight, sir?
Correct, it's current.
Okay, and how long have you been practicing?
I've been practicing for thirty five years. Um, most of it in New York and New Jersey. And I've had my own business for the last six years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ligori. I do find you qualified and will accept your testimony as an expert in architecture.
Thank you. Sorry for the lack of camera.
We're not qualifying you as an expert in tech, so you're fine.
That I'm not. But I, I will say this. I'm representing this site. This is one twenty five Christopher Columbus Drive. It's between Barton and Rose Streets. It's block one two nine oh one and lot number four. It's a property is twenty five feet wide, by hundred feet, twenty five hundred square feet total. And represents sales of cannabis and accessories in the front portion facing the street. Uh, it's the sales space is six hundred eighty two square feet. And it's behind it is a storage area of nine hundred and fifteen square feet. And also a secure storage area of one hundred and ninety five square feet. It's facing the street with the two doors in the front. And so it has two bathrooms, two ADA bathrooms and an office. In the front of the building and the elevations. On the next sheet, three two. Thank you. As I said, it's facing the street. It has two doors. It has, it's glazed with frosty glass. And also it has brick construction, masonry construction, which we are going to repair and then paint white. Yep. And the side of the building is also a masonry as brick, in which case it needs some patchwork and we plastering of the stucco and then again painted white. It will have a sign, a twenty square foot sign above the door. It will be illuminated. And there also will be a blade sign, a thirty inch diameter blade sign. The blade sign, you can see on the elevation below. I think the blade sign is missing on this drawing. Do you have the more updated drawing?
Um, sir, I, I, I could take over and share that screen. I have them up on my.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Sick, if you want, I can shut, show that blade sign. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see, there, the last one. And blade sign in this buried location.
There we, there we go. That's it. That's the blade sign. And there, this, this is the correct drawing. You can also see the section on the left of the sign coming out from the wall, four inches. And that's really it. I think from a presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ligori. Is there any kind of buffer entrance? Matt, doesn't the zoning call for for an interior entrance as well as an exterior entrance? You know, a place to check IDs and, and. The. Yes, I think that, so I, I have had some conversations with the applicant about that. And I do see them here. They are promoted. It might be best to hear from them because they are, I, probably the best to speak to that question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any second egress to this facility or is just a front door only?
Second egress is not required by building code for this.
It's not required?
No, not for a retail store.
Okay.
Julissa, you wanna get on and just kinda talk a little bit and address some of their concerns?
We just need to swear in first, Mr. Sick.
And would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Could you state and spell your full name for the record?
First name Julissa, J U L I S S A, last name Boniga, B as in boy, O and as in Nancy, I L L A.
Ms. Boniga, good evening. So you are the owner?
Yes, correct.
Okay, excellent. So we're not qualifying you as an expert. Please, the floor is yours, whatever you wanna say.
Yeah, from my understanding, we don't need a waiting area. I know a lot of the medicinal dispensaries do that, but I didn't see any ordinance saying that the recreational locations need like a waiting area for IDs.
Matt, is that correct or no? It's my understanding that there is some regulation regarding consumption areas, but they're not proposing one. And I believe that they, Ms. Boniga, it might be good to speak about how you're utilizing technology with dealing with customers in their entry as, as we've discussed it and lead up to this hearing.
Yeah, sure. So there are different softwares that we can use. Everybody that comes in will have their ID checked, just to make sure they are over twenty one when they walk in. There will be a security present near the door as well. We will also have a hostess by the door as well to take everyone's IDs. Every order that is placed, the POS system does house their ID information as well. So whoever places an order, they will be identified.
Yeah, and then to further, in response to that question, like Chairman Langston, I know that they are required to have secure storage areas, which they are. They did delineate on their floor plans. If you think back to one of our prior micro business applications, it was an existing CBD store on Communipaw Avenue. It's a very similar setup to this where they did not have a vestibule. Okay, understood. Um, yeah, that was a while ago, that, that one. All right, that was almost, that was, I don't know. I don't know why I looked that way to, to find out what date it was. I think that was last, or so? It was last March, I think. March, okay. Almost a year ago. Yeah. Looked at my microwave. Oh, oh my God. Okay, um, so, you know, we do have to talk about security and are there security cameras, Ms. Boniga?
Yes, there will be security cameras placed strategically throughout the facility. They will be behind the registers, basically covering almost every inch of the store.
Okay.
Storage as well.
All right, understood. Thank you. Thank you for the testimony. Does anybody have any questions either for Mr. Ligori, Ms. Boniga?
Yeah, security on the side of the building and the back of the building, so you will have a side of the building, you would have security?
The side of the building is owned by the one fifteen Columbus Drive. It's a private location. No one can access that. And the back is a private backyard from the house behind the building. So we will have security placed inside in the front of the store, so they'll be able to see both. And then we also have uh, security cameras strategically placed on both ends of the facade.
Okay, so the reason why I asked the question is when I'm looking at the pictures that you, that you said submitted, it looks like you could just, anybody could walk back there, you know, it's like.
Oh, yeah, no.
The picture's showing like it's a, you know, anybody could be uh, so that's why I asked that question. If there was some kind of cam or something that shut, stop that from happening. Okay, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Boniga. Thank you, Mr. Ligori. Mr. Sick, anything else?
No, I'm just happy to, if you have any questions that you have, this is all I do. All I handle is New Jersey and New York cannabis and Connecticut cannabis work. So if there's any little. So if there's any little nuances or details on what. The regulations are and how I can help explain that. Happy to do that. Otherwise, you know, uh we're all good.
Okay, appreciate it, sir. Um we are going to move on to public comment, but uh hang in there just in case, you know, we have any follow-up questions or anything like that. And you're welcome to uh provide a closing statement after that if you want. Okay, that being said, if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you were calling in, press door nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Chair, speaking of more public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Let's hear from uh our planner, Matt. Do you have anything?
Yeah, so we uh we prepared a memo uh dated uh March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three for this uh case. It's available on the data portal. And one of the items that's a little bit different from uh the majority of. Class five cannabis retailers we've received is that this is a microbusiness. Um and they're in an area that's not only uh within the buffer area. Uh where we encourage micro businesses to locate by uh pass stations, but it's also in the neighborhood commercial district. Where we also encourage uh microbusinesses to locate. And the way that is done is there is not a six hundred foot. Door-to-door requirement for microbusinesses. There's actually a limit of two per block. Um and so there are no other uh microbusinesses applied for or approved. Um or recognized at this time on this particular block of downtown Jersey City. Um in the memo, we talk about uh and we we provide the definition for microbusiness. Um and they perceived uh. They applied to the cannabis control board as a microbusiness, received approval as a microbusiness class five. Um and they're before you here tonight as micro. They uh they are on a lot that's two thousand five hundred square feet. And one of the requirements is that they can have a space no larger than that. Um which just happens to be one of our most typical lot sizes here in Jersey City. I would, I'm looking at the the conditions and I'm seeing one. Uh one of our typical ones that's missing. Um which just says if there's any building code changes or minor facade changes uh required by building code. Um or or deemed necessary that uh that they can uh seek approval and work with planning staff to change those. I'm just gonna bring up the um I raised this concern. And I'll just bring up the drawings one more time. To talk uh the board through it. You, I'm gonna zoom in just slightly if I can. So this is a fairly straightforward um building. To address Mister Torres's comments, these are on the property line, these facades, and it's just to show that they're going to be doing some work to. Um improve those uh facades on this existing building. But what I wanted to speak to more importantly was that this uh kind of hatched area. Is the existing um garage door opening. And so you can see they're going to be doing some infill brickwork here. Um but just in the off chance that uh they need to increase the glazing, I I would want to add that typical condition. That would allow them to to potentially put a header at the existing height of the back garage. So I would just say that we would recommend if if you are making a motion to approve. That we add that fifth condition and that you also um. Make a motion with the other conditions that are in the staff memo.
Yeah, I think uh that condition's completely reasonable. Uh Mister Sick, do you uh have any objections to any of those conditions?
Absolutely not.
Go ahead.
Should that be part of um? Any code changes that will cause the interior to make a change too? Can it be just brought up to the staff? And that be worked out too? For interior, just besides the exterior of the building? Am I jumping the gun on that?
Uh I'm not sure. What are you referring to, Eddie?
I refer to the ADA bathrooms.
Yeah, that 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 condition that I I mentioned does address that. Yeah, let me uh let me pull up the language I have it. Uh so it it would read like this. All materials and color selections shall be shown on final plans. No change to the facade and site design. Including materials as well as any changes that may be required by the Office of Construction Code shall be permitted without consultation and approval by planning staff. So if there is a requirement to increase the size of the bathrooms, which yes, I believe that has gone through, uh I'm not sure if it. Applies to retail or they might already be accommodating that. Um I haven't looked at that.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. I was just wondering that way.
Yeah, the the uh there's many items inside a building that uh construction code does change. Um and and either informs us or just inform us.
I agree with you. Okay, just wanted to clear that up. Hey.
Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, this time I'll I'll entertain a motion then.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-three dash zero-two-three as presented to the board this evening together with staff recommendation. On existing conditions and added on the fifth condition.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval with conditions.
Acting Vice Chair Gangdon.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Com- Commissioner Dr. Desai. Uh I didn't hear you, Commissioner.
I I did not hear an answer.
Yes, um I'm not, for some reason, I'm not.
Yeah, Doctor, we're not hearing you.
She's muted now, okay?
Yeah. Say again, my doctor's sign?
Thank you.
Okay, we got an eye. Thank you, Doctor.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Wish you all the best, I.
Chairman Langston.
Uh, Miss Bonilla, how far along are you? Do we uh do you have your state approvals yet?
Yes, I have my uh conditional approval, so we're just missing the municipal approvals. We can apply for the conversion.
Awesome, okay. Uh best of luck. I vote aye and uh I hope to see you open soon.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Motion carries all favor and motion prove the conditions.
All right, thank you, everybody. Uh let's move on to item fifteen. It's case P two-two dash zero-nine-nine is a preliminary and final major site plan amendment. For one thirty Bay Street.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh my name is Gerard Pizzillo. I'm an attorney with Genova Burns, appearing this evening on behalf of the applicant. Warren F. A. LLC. The property is one thirty Bay Street, block one-one-five-oh-four, lot two. Uh located in the Powerhouse Arts redevelopment area. We were initially uh scheduled on for the March seventh meeting. Uh we did get adjourned and carried uh with preservation of notice. I did prepare an affidavit. And submitted it. I just asked if uh Santo has a chan- has had a chance to review it and uh if he can make sure everything is statutorily compliant.
Thank you, Council. I am going to receive your affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application P two-two dash zero-zero-nine. For the property here this evening, all does appear to be in order. And if I read your notice correctly, it's an administrative amendment with respect to the A and P. And they look to be pretty uh. Small amendments, obviously, if they're administrative, they tend to be small. They're fully compliant, but. Uh with that, let's mark that as A one in council. Uh if we can get right into. What those are, and if you have anybody to testify to.
Sure, sure. I I I expect to be very brief. I know it's been a long couple of weeks. Uh I hear you and and but thank you first and foremost. Uh so yes. We're getting right into it. Three minor changes to a previously approved project uh under P nineteen-one-two-three. Which we appeared before this board in February of twenty twenty. Uh the project is a historic building. Uh so we did appear before the Historic Preservation Commission with the proposed revisions that we're seeking tonight. Uh and they did issue a uh favorable recommendation to this board. Uh and issued a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed changes. This is a building that's under construction. However, all of the items that we're requesting tonight are proposed. So they are not done yet. Uh and we are asking for your approval prior to constructing them. The change, there's three changes. Uh they are located at the ground floor, at the Bay Street and the first street side. And that just includes the addition of two retail doors as well as some signage on the first street side. The other ch- changes that we're asking for approval for this evening are interior changes to the fifth and sixth floors of the addition that was previously approved. Uh Nicole Robertson from Grow Architects can run through those changes very, very quickly. Uh I should note, before I turn it over to her, I did share our plans with the Powerhouse Arts Neighborhood Association. Uh and let them know that we would be appearing before this board for the changes. Uh and we did not receive any negative feedback from them. Uh so that said, uh I can have Nicole testify as to the plans that she's prepared and we filed. Uh and run you through the proposal.
All right, thank you, Council. Did you receive any positive feedback?
I received no feedback. Uh but I did share everything with them.
Okay, understood. Thank you. I just want to get that on record that.
No, for sure. No positive, no negative.
Okay. And it's refreshing to know that it wasn't built yet.
Do you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State and spell your full name, please.
Nicole, N I C O L E, Robertson, R O B E R T S O N.
Ms. Robertson, good evening. Uh always a pleasure. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Um so uh Gerard did a great summary, actually, and I'm just gonna uh. Go quickly through a comparison set of plans that we've put together to um. Just make the adjustments to the previously approved plans as clear as possible. Um so I'm presenting the first sheet. Each sheet I show um will show the approved sheet and then our proposed adjustments. So what you're seeing here is the approved uh title sheet.
Nicole, we don't see your screen yet.
I'm sorry.
And second of all, uh the plant, the pres- the presentation that you're gonna show, part of the submission or no?
Uh it's the plans that were submitted to planning already.
Okay.
Yes, we were asked to create a comparison set. Um so I'm just looking. I've done this before, but why? Not seeing how to share my screen. See, oh, there we go. I've minimized the window too much, okay. Okay, can you see my screen now?
Yes, we have.
Okay, great. So this is the comparison set that we submitted um to planning at uh Mallory's request. To just uh clarify what the adjustments are. So we have the first uh title sheet. So this was the approved set. The only change that was made to this sheet, um which I'll go into more detail about later, was the gross uh building. Square footage, which increased um due to an increase to the floor, um an extension of the sixth floor. So that was why this um area schedule is is changed. And so on this sheet, this is the um proposed sheet, which shows this adjustment. Actually, the graphics were kind of reorganized as well, but the data remains the same. But the building area in the proposed um adjustment is increased by two thousand five hundred and sixty-three square feet. To um one hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty square feet as a result of the proposed extension to the sixth floor. And as George mentioned, there's no change to the exterior building envelope. These are all um internal adjustments to the floor area. This is the approved first floor plan. And this is the proposed um first floor plan with um revision bubbles around the areas that we've changed. I'll zoom in on these. Um we're proposing two additional doors uh fronting on Bay Street in order to um increase the flexibility. Of the use of this retail space. Um as the owners of the building have, you know, been engaging with potential tenants for the space. They're finding that they need that flexibility with the additional doors. Um those doors, as I'll show in the elevations, are um designed to be in alignment with the window bays above. Totally symmetrical, everything kind of reinforcing the existing building facade. And then on the lower right-hand corner, what you're seeing bubbled there is actually the omission of demising walls. Um in the previously approved plans, we had a small retail space in the corner there. Um and that really had to do with um a tenant that had planned to take the space. Um when we got the original approvals and now the plan is to um, you know, lease that space, either the entire space or with some other. Um potential division, but at this time, we're showing it as um one large uh retail space that fronts on Warren Street. So we've removed um the demising walls that were previously in that location, which you can see here. The approved fifth floor plan. And then we have the proposed adjustments to the fifth floor. So the first one is at the rear of what we call the red and gray building, which is the existing six-story building that fronts on Bay Street. The rear facade where um we had doors here previously, we're creating a large garage door. Um to open to the um roof terrace, which was part of the original approved plan, just as a way of um. Creating a more seamless relationship between inside and outside. Uh the the owner of the building is found in talking with potential tenants that. Since, you know, the pandemic experience that many uh tenants are looking for more exposure to natural ventilation and. Access to outdoor spaces. So we've introduced a garage door here. And then these two bubbles um on the um. Facade of the um addition, these bubbles here, this one and this one on the right are accordion doors that open up. So that um you know, the office space can be connected um more directly to the roof terrace that surrounds that um space. And then the large bubble um here is highlighting the location of new columns that support a um. The extension to the sixth floor above. So really, I'm just highlighting here the location of of columns. And this is a, this is a double height addition that was previously approved. So I think at that time, there was a tenant, like a gym. Tenant to or rock climbing, something like that, that that um had plan, had been planned for the space. And now the um owner has elected to extend the floor area. Instead, um but no change to the exterior envelope at all. This is the approved sixth floor plan. So you can see the existing building, the red and gray building. Um has an existing sixth floor and our addition, you know, our core in the center, which is our circulation core, is at the same level. And in the proposed plan, we're extending that sixth floor into the volume of the addition space. Um and so that's the increa- increase of about two thousand uh five hundred and sixty-three square feet, I think. Um so that's highlighted here. You can see that um extension of the sixth floor. And you can see the impact at the exterior. This is the um approved south elevation that fronts on Bay Street. And I've highlighted here the two proposed doors. So the original design had one centralized door and, you know, storefront glass. On either side in the open bays. And now we have two additional doors that are symmetrically located, aligned with the windows above. Um just reinforcing the existing um facade design. We did make a little adjustment here to the. Design of these windows, which was actually just an error, like a graphic error in our in our plans previously. They look like this and. They really should look like these windows. So that's a kind of minor thing, but you know, as this is a really um a very important historic structure, we. we feel it's very important to bring to, um, the attention of this board and historic, any adjustments that we might be making um, along the way and prior to construction to get your approval. Um, this is the approved east elevation with our addition, our, our two-story kind of volume addition that's clad in cowl. And then our proposed accordion doors, which, um, I'll demonstrate in, um, the, uh, sightline diagrams. While it's visible in the front elevation, these new accordion doors are not visible, um, from the public right-of-way from the sightline diagram. And this is, um, the approved, uh, north elevation. So what you're seeing kind of recessed in the back here. Um, this area, or, sorry, I got a little low on that. This area is the red, the rear of the red and gray building that I was referring to. Uh, in the plan, and those are our, um, garage, the garage door that will open to, um, the existing or the future roof terrace. But also not visible from the public, uh, right-of-way. And this is a detail, this is actually a new sheet that we added, um, to include, uh, these details for the garage door, which is a hydraulic, uh, hydraulic, uh, garage door, which creates a really large opening, which is very nice. And then we also added a section, um, we did not have a section in the, um, previously approved plans through this particular area. So we've included that so that, um, we can see, although it's actually not cutting through, um, the part that it, um, it's not actually parting, cutting through the red and gray building, but it is showing the, um, the extension of the floor into the existing or the previously approved volume. And this is another drawing, a section that we hadn't previously included, um, but just for clarity to explain, um, the extension of this floor. We're showing it here in the location of columns. And then we have, um, this was the previously approved, uh, retail signage sheet. Um, which? Oh, that's, oh, this is a new sheet. I'm sorry. We created a new sheet because I think we ran out of space on, um, the previous sheets. So there's really, there's no change to the signage design. I think we just relocated some details. And then we have the approved, um, sightline diagrams, which show, um, you know, how much of the addition is actually visible from the public right-of-way. And then the proposed, uh, demonstrates that the cornice, um, of the yellow building actually blocks the view to, um, the area where you would see the accordion doors. And that's actually shown pretty clearly here as well, um, in this sightline view. The, um, the sightline over the, the cornice, um, we actually will not see the windows or the new accordion doors. And then we have, again, the proposed, um, sightline diagrams, um, again, that just re, you know, just demonstrate again that we're not seeing the accordion, accordion doors. And we're also not seeing the, um, the, the, the new garage doors. Um, so that is in, those are the, the changes that we're presenting tonight, which are fairly minor, but we, you know, understand the importance of this building to, um, to the city and that any changes we might make, we of course want to get, um, approval from the board before construction.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. We appreciate it.
Sure.
Um, okay, I have no questions. Anybody else from the board? Anything?
No.
All right. Counsel, anything else?
No, Chairman, the only thing I would add is, uh, just to confirm, none of these proposed changes trigger any deviations. They're all compliant with the plan and they don't worsen or exacerbate any of the previously approved deviations. So with that said, uh, we rest and happy to answer any questions that the public has.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. And Ms. Robertson, if you could, please stop that, uh, screen share. There you go. Thank you. We appreciate it. All right. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. I see one hand raised. Anybody from the public, if you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Promoted C N G B fifty-nine.
Hello?
Would you raise your hand to be sworn?
Yes, please.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And if you can state and spell your full name?
Yes, my name is Chuck N. Spelling is C-H-E-U-K. Last name's N. N is Nancy. G is George. Only two letters.
Thank you.
Mr. N, good evening. Uh, we have three minutes. Okay, go ahead, sir. The floor is yours for three minutes.
Okay, I have, uh, two quick questions. Is there a height increase for the new proposal?
No. Height stays the same as it was previously approved.
Okay, the second one is that the, on the sixth floor or the fifth floor, you're going to have a, a patio? Terrace?
I think, go ahead.
Is it new also?
No, it's not new. It was part of the previously approved plan and it's at the fifth floor.
On the fifth floor? Okay, and any, any, any plan to have a noise reduction panel installed?
So this is an office building. Uh, we don't anticipate very mu- much noise coming. Uh, this is, you know, it's not a residential patio area or a residential terrace area. This is an office. This is an office floor. Uh, so we don't think there's going to be a need for any of those soundproofing measures or noise cancelling efforts. And I think the way it was designed, it's set back enough, uh, that it shouldn't have any of that negative, uh, noise impact on the neighbors.
I hope so. Best of my concern. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Chair, see no more public. I move to close.
We still have, uh, Ms.
One more?
Nope.
Catherine has joined.
Hey.
Hi. Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
Yes.
And state and spell your full name?
Catherine Moore, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N, M-O-O-R-E.
Ms. Moore, good evening. Uh, you know, we have three minutes for you.
Okay, uh, just a quick question. Um, are there any, will the new spaces that, uh, will go along Bay Street, if they're going to be restaurant-related, uh, is there any, um, plans to have any kind of ventilation or, you know, it are? How is the possibility, you know, of like, what type of retail can go in, in, uh, multiple locations? And then just looking at the roof, um, above on, on the, 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 uh, portion that's right next to one forty bay. I live at one forty bay. Um, we have a, 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 a community, uh, a common space right there next to the building. Um, I noticed like, I believe on the top, um, level, there's, is there an, uh, additional ventilation or something that, you know, has changed with the very top of the roof of that building? That looks different than the, you know, when you look at proposed and what's already approved. Um, there's a change at the, at the very top, you know, um, there's, it looks like, you know, something has been added. Uh, very close to the top of the building next to one forty bay.
I think you're referring, there are, um, ventilation, um, chimneys that are, were part of the original approved plans.
But that wasn't, but it's not on the, like, you know, this is the approved and this is the new. It looks like that's something that's new.
I'm not seeing, I, I, I don't think I'm seeing that. I think that's, um, uh, I could, I'm not sure what you're referring to because we do have three, um, exhaust chimneys that were on the approved plans and they're.
On the far west side of the building.
Mm-hmm.
On the, on the Bay Street side.
Bay Street side, far west. Okay, I'm not.
So you have like that, that, the, the, the structure and then you have, like, some kind of, looks like some sort of ventilation or some, something that's close to the building. That's where, that's our common area on the roof.
I think you may be seeing, there are some areas that are shaded on the floor that refer to infill of the floor itself, where we're infilling some existing openings. There was an existing elevator shaft and an existing stairwell that are kind of shaded. I mean, I could share my screen again.
Maybe it's a, maybe it's a stairwell? I don't know. I just, I just don't know what that, what it is and it's, it's not, it's, it's, you have the approved and then you, when you look at, uh,
I can.
Next one.
Can I, can I share again and I'll, yeah, so, um, so this is the approved. And you can see there's.
Nope, 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 nope. Can you go to the, 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 the street view side?
Yeah, I think, um, Ms. Moore, I think we're talking about correctly.
So that, yeah, so if you look at it.
Go ahead, Chairman.
So I'm sorry, that, that was the print I was trying to find. That's what I'm looking at.
Oh, you're talking about the.
And then that looks different. So you get a lot of like little cloudy things around it?
I think, oh, actually, we kept the existing bulkhead. That was a change. There's an existing stair bulkhead there that previously we were demolishing. Let me see. And we kept it, um, which I did not highlight as an adjustment, but that's an existing bulkhead. An existing stair bulkhead that we, we've kept. We're removing the stair on the interior, but the owner decided to not alter that portion of the existing building.
Okay, and then the mechanical screen looks like it's bigger.
The mechanical screen is, I don't believe it's bigger. It's six, it's eight foot nine from.
Wider.
I don't, I don't believe we changed that footprint at all. Um, it's.
You see that little line? It just goes a little further over. Just, I just wanted to point it out because it was just something that was different um, than the stuff that you were highlighting. Um, but I don't want to obsess on it too much, but I just was just sort of curious what that was, if that was going to be sort of ventilation, um, or any kind of space or.
Yeah, I mean, the mechanical screen was part of the original. I don't have the roof plan here. I can, I can find the roof plan and open it, but the mechanical screen is shielding, you know, there's a lot of equipment up there. There's a generator. There's like a number of condensing units. There's a lot of equipment there that's all set back from the front facade, so it's not visible from the public right-of-way. I think.
Right, yeah, but like I said, the, the, our one forty bay common roof deck is right, is right up against that corner on the top floor. And so like if there's going to be ventilation or noise.
You're talking about this, this distance? I don't believe.
Yeah, so like, are, you know, just a level to, you know, just, you know, like you basically, you're on the roof, you look to the west and look down, you're looking at the common roof deck for our building. So I just, just, just curious what that was because it wasn't there in the approved.
It, it is here in the approved. I think what's, what's a little bit confusing is that the bulk, oh, sorry. Um, the bulkhead, there's this bulkhead, but I can measure this distance, um, you know, I could measure this.
Okay, so, so it's, it's now there. It's, it wasn't there before. So I, I'm probably like eating into my three minutes talking about this because I have one other question about access to the, um, mezzanine, is the elevator going to be extended or is it just accessible by stairs?
No, the, the elevator already goes to that level.
To the mezzanine level?
It goes to the sixth floor. The sixth floor is an existing floor and the mezzanine is an extension of the sixth floor.
Right, so the only access to the mezzanine is a stairwell within the space.
Oh, it, within the space, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, but it's accessible from the elevator lobby.
Right, but you still have to walk up the stairs.
No, you have to walk around. I'll go to the plan in a second, but let me, I just measured this eighteen foot eight and a quarter. Granted, I'm on, um, doing this a little bit on the fly, but I'm sure it's, I don't, you know.
It's not huge. Just like I said, it's like, it's something that's different.
I have to.
And it wasn't being pointed.
I.
Nicole, if you could just get to, if you could just get to Ms. Moore's second question with regards to the interior.
I don't believe that the footprint of the mechanical area changed and I could give you that detail later, but just visually looking at it, to me, it doesn't look like it changed and I don't recall changing that.
It's just missing, you know, you don't see it on the approved and then you see something, you know, sticking above the roof, um.
But it is here on the approved. It's, it's this.
No, that's the proposed.
This is, this is the proposed.
Uh-huh. And I'm talking about the thing that's closest to one forty bay.
Right, so what was previously approved was eliminating the existing bulkhead. This piece here is an existing stair bulkhead.
Uh-huh.
But that's there right now.
Right.
We're not eliminating that. We've decided.
So you're keeping it as opposed to getting rid of it because the approved shows it gone.
Correct, yeah.
But there is no more stairs there.
You can't get to the roof from that.
Okay, can you ask your question, Ms. Robinson? Can you stick to the question posed? I understand the questions, but.
Okay, what was the other question? It was.
Uh, just access to the mezzanine. If the elevator, I was just curious if the elevator was going to be extended to go up to the mezzanine because right now, so that's an additional story.
No.
It's not an additional story. You can't get, you can't access the mezzanine from another elevator. So you get to the, you get you into the elevator floor six, you get out of the elevator, walk up the stairs to the mezzanine.
Okay, yeah.
Now you go around, I'm sorry, just to clarify, this, you can get to the, this, these floors are on the same level.
Right.
Can go through this door to this sixth floor.
Okay.
Yeah. You do not have to use the stair. You can, you can access it by elevator. It's.
The mezzanine.
Mezzanine is accessible. It's at the same level as the sixth floor, which is accessible by elevator through the elevator lobby, through doors at the end of this hall. These spaces are all at the same level.
Oh, that's really big. Okay, that's bigger than I thought. Okay. I see what you're talking about now. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Moore. We appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. Is there anybody else here from public that wants to comment on this application?
Oh, and by the way, uh, the, the, um, Powerhouse Arts District Neighborhood Association, we were never contacted. Um, I, I, I only know about this because I got.
Catherine, Catherine, I sent you an email. You told me, you told me you were going to share it with your board. I sent you that email.
All right, I'll have to look for it. I don't recall.
We did. I would not put that on the record if I didn't send that email out.
All right, I gotta, I gotta look back at it. I don't remember.
All right. Thank you.
Chairman, seeing no other, uh, members of the public wishing to speak, I motion to close the public session.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, this is, who's, this is Tim. Tim, you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, planning approves of the, uh, the changes as presented, uh, by Mr. Brazil.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash zero nine nine as presented to the board this evening for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Acting Vice Chair, Commissioner Gangen.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Uh, I'm an I. I don't think I heard Dr. Desai's vote. Bridget, did you?
Yeah, and I was just going to.
It was a faded eye, but.
I, I didn't hear it. Thank you.
That was an I.
Doc, you gotta get your microphone fixed.
All right, thank you, everybody.
I hope they got the questions wrong.
All right, thank you, everybody. Um, we do need to get to one more application all the way at the end. Uh, I apologize, everybody. We're going to call case P two-two dash two-one-two is a preliminary and final major site plan for, uh, Homestead Place, uh, six ninety-seven Newark Ave, thirty Cottage Street, thirty-five Cottage Street, twenty-six Man Ripon Ave, nine Homestead Place. Uh, but in the meantime, we do have to, given the time, we do have to start carrying other applications. If we could start bringing them up, Cam?
Promoted Michael Higgins and Mr. Harrington.
And I'm sure Mr. Harrington is going to be over brief, I think, is the term I'm looking for tonight.
Yes, this is, uh, what, what are we, are we starting Homestead or are you doing adjournments on?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do adjournments first, but then we're gonna start Homestead.
Absolutely.
All right.
The only cases that haven't been carried yet are four oh one Whitten and, um, Mr. Joseph's, um, Liberty Ave.
Okay, can, do we still have them on?
Yes.
Okay, let's bring them up.
So Mr. Harrington, um, assuming is representing for Mr. Glock and Mr. Higgins is representing for Mr. Joseph.
Uh, yes, that, uh, the, that application listed for Mr. Glock is, is my application. So, um. Yeah, if we can carry either, I'm, I'm, either, I'm thinking of twenty first is packed, uh, and maybe it'd be better off to carry to April fourth, uh, towards the beginning of the agenda.
Cam, can we, we make that work?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harrington. Yeah, let's carry case P two three dash zero zero seven. Is an administrative amendment for four oh one to four oh five Whiten Street, uh, to a date certain.
With, with preservation of notices.
Preservation of notice, of course.
Incentive extend time.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Chairman, could you give me just thirty seconds and nobody talk for a minute?
Absolutely. Zip it, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, you got it. All right, Cam, who do we have for Liberty? Liberty Ave?
That's me, uh, I'm, I'm here instead of, uh.
There you are. Good evening, Mr. Higgins. Um.
Good evening, Sharon.
Are you okay with, uh, April fourth as well? We'll get you up, uh, up towards the front.
Yeah, I understand the twenty first is very full. This will be a short one. It's minor subdivision, but, um, if the fourth is.
Yeah, I know the twenty first, we've packed that already, um. We can certainly get you right up front, uh, you know, early on, on the fourth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel. So case P two two dash one eight four is a minor subdivision for five twenty nine Liberty Ave. That'll be carried to our April fourth meeting with preservation of notice. Okay, so let's get back to case P two two dash two one two is a preliminary and final major site plan for Homestead Place. I've already read the addresses into the record and council, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Connel Foley on behalf of the applicant. Uh, oh, thank you, just promoted Mr. Collins. Um, this application before the board, I know the board is very familiar with the Homestead Place extension with all the projects that have been approved there. So what we were tasked to do, uh, in the last, you know, six months or so was to put together a comprehensive plan for the treatment of the Homestead, uh, uh, extension from Pavonia Avenue through Newark Avenue. So what we're presenting to you is, is a result of meeting with the planning department with the community and with the Jersey City Engineering Department. Um, so it's, it's, um, the treatment of the pavers, the treatment of the crossings uh, on Pavonia Avenue, Van Ripen Avenue and Cottage Street. Um, so that's, that's before you, because the idea is to have, and I think this was discussed in the past, to say that the board and, and the planning department has one comprehensive plan. Um, even though you've, you've approved probably five different applications and projects along this, this way. And then I note, this is just some materials and engineering issues. Um, we've talked to planning about coming back in the future with, with kind of design of, you know, the, the, you know, the, the chairs, the, um, you know, uh, tree pits and, and things like that. Um, and artwork to, to make it look, I, my analogy is kind of like, we're presenting you the new floor for the living room. And then down the line, we're going to come back and show you what the furniture is, uh, gonna, gonna be and, and the curtains so that, that it looks nice. So, uh, I did provide notices, uh, on, on this application. It's, it's a little bit of a unique application because there are no building improvements, um, but we did provide, uh, notices and asked that they be, um, marked into the record.
Thank you, counsel. I am receipt of an affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to case P two two dash two one two. Uh, we are going to mark it as A one for purposes of the record. And I thank you for that note because I was curious about the notice.
Okay. All right, so, so with that said, I have, um, Chris Collins is our civil engineer. So as I noted, there, there is no structure here, no building, so it's, it's, uh, Chris is, is the lead engineer on, on this. He's, you know, been at all these meetings with the, the engineering department uh, and in communication, uh, with planning on this, on this, uh, application. So I'm gonna, uh, hand it over to Chris.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name, please.
Christopher Collins, uh, C H R I S T O P H E R. Last name C O L L I N S.
Mr. Collins, good evening. Uh, your engineering license is current tonight?
Good evening, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Thank you. So bring up the plans. Um, I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. Can everyone see my screen?
Can you make it a little bigger?
Sure. So as Mr. Harrington mentioned, this is a comprehensive plan for the, um, entire Homestead walkway, um, surface treatments. Um, so that spans from Pavonia Avenue to the south all the way to New York Avenue, uh, to the north. Um. So we'll start at the south end. Um, this is the six eighteen Pavonia Building, which, uh, is currently under construction. Um, for context over here, um, on the plan, left side of the page is the Journal Squared, uh, development. Um, so starting at the, at the bottom here, um, we're proposing a twenty foot wide crosswalk. Um, there is an existing, um, rectangular rapid, uh, flashing beacon system that alerts, uh, drivers to the presence of pedestrians when, uh, a pedestrian presses the button. That will remain, will be slightly relocated to accommodate this wider crosswalk. Um, there is a crosswalk there now. It's about eight feet wide. Um, and then in consultation with the, uh, city engineering department, um, we, uh, are adding this six foot, uh, curb bump out on the north side of the, uh, the crosswalk. Um, and that'll help, um, slow down, uh, drivers as they approach the, uh, the crosswalk. Um, at some point in the future, when there's enough, uh, pedestrian traffic to warrant a full signal, um. The, uh, applicant, uh, will work with the engineering department and port authority to, um, to, uh, develop plans for that signal, but, um, not at this time. As we go north, um, we start to get to the main part of the pedestrian walkway. This section here, uh, is actually the, um, the only block where Homestead Place actually currently exists. Um, right now is a vehicular road that's going to be converted into pedestrian walkway. Um, at the entrance, at all of the entrances to the walkway, we're going to have, um, thirty-six inch high stainless steel bollards that will be removable. Um, there may be some instances where, um, subsurface utilities, um, prohibit us from installing them in a regular pattern. Um, and in those cases, uh, we will provide, um, movable planters to close any gaps to deter uh, vehicles from, uh, entering the pedestrian, uh, area. But as I mentioned, they will be removable so that, um, you know, if there's any maintenance vehicles, um, that need to get in here, that they can do that. Um, the surface treatment for the walkway, um, I'm actually going to jump ahead here. Um. Will be a combination of pavers. Um, the main part of the walkway will have, um, these precast concrete pavers in this interlocking pattern. Um, seventy-five percent will be this winter marble color, um, which is a lighter gray. Twenty-five percent will be this French gray. That's a little bit darker. And then around the edges, um, there will be this granite paper, um, which is a, um, a darker gray, almost black, uh, with a textured finish. And these pavers will, um, be sitting on a concrete base so that they, um, they're less likely to settle or, um, uh, come out of alignment. Jumping back to the site plan. Um, there will be bike racks, the Jersey City standard bike racks, um, wherever, uh, there are outdoor, um, bicycle spaces required for each of the, um, uh, proposed developments, um, according to their, um, originally approved site plans. Moving up to the intersection with Van Ripen, um, again, you have bollards here. Um. This is, uh, the first of two, uh, raised crosswalks or speed tables, um, traversing the road. Um, and in consultation with, uh, the engineering department, um, we are proposing a, also a twenty foot wide crossing. Um, this is a red endura blend, uh, red brick endura blend, um, textured pattern, uh, very similar to a lot of the other, um, crosswalks you see in the city. Um, and then also at the request of the, um, division of engineering, we're providing these painted bump outs. Um, these will be, uh, painted a, a beige color. Um, and with, uh, gray endura blend, um, bordering and we'll have the, um, reflective, um, uh, posts to help, um, guide uh, motorists, um, toward the, um, toward the crosswalk and, and, um, kind of visually direct them to slow down. Um, and that's in addition to all of the, um, the standard, uh, crosswalk signage, um, that, um, that is required by the M E T C D. Uh, we can't provide this bump out over here, uh, or this painted bump out over here, I should say, because there's an existing driveway, uh, to a residence over here. Um, but should this, uh, lot be developed, um, the engineering division may install, um, the full, uh, bump out here in the future. Moving farther north, um, again, this is, so this is between, um, Van Ripen Avenue and Cottage Street, uh, again, same treatments throughout. Um, and a similar crosswalk condition up here on Cottage Street. Um, and again, you see the, the edging paver that's going to be that darker, uh, gray and then the combination, uh, the other gray, um, pavers in the middle. So this is a phasing plan, which, um, the engineering division requested, um, just showing kind of the, uh, the uh, status of all of these, these various projects. Uh, twenty-six twenty cottage is already up and built. Um, six eighteen Pavonia and twenty-six thirty-two Van Ripen, um, are currently under construction. Um, I'm going to skip through these. It's, um, just detailing the signage and striping. Uh, if there's any questions about that, I'm happy to, um, take them. And then moving on to grading and drainage, um, a lot of this is, is mostly the same as what was originally proposed, um, with the various approved, um, site plan applications. Um, new water and sewer infrastructure, uh, on some of these blocks. We, uh, had extensive coordination with the Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority, um, on some of these upgrades and relocations to accommodate um, this walkway, um, and provide adequate utility service to all of these new buildings that are going up. Um, and having to navigate around, uh, P S C and G infrastructure has, uh, has been, um, quite a challenge, but, um, that's, it's an ongoing process, uh, with the, the J Sammy Way and, and P S C and G. We've also developed, um, an overall lighting plan. Um. So we're addressing lighting in, um, three ways. We are proposing, uh, overhead string lights. We're proposing building mounted lights and we're also utilizing the existing Cobra Head Streetlights, um, on, on the various streets. We're actually proposing a new one down here at the crosswalk on Pavonia. Um. Even without the string lights, we are just shy of complying with the minimum of point five foot candles, um, uh, which is the minimum required, uh, lighting level, uh, for sidewalks in the, um, Journal Square redevelopment plan. Um, but I have an, another exhibit here, uh, detailing the string lights, which, um, has not been submitted, so, uh, we probably should mark this as A two. Um, not mistaken? I think you're muted, Chuck.
Yeah, yeah, it is A two. Yeah, I apologize for it.
Um, so this is, uh, this is a plan, uh, labeled, uh, string lighting exhibit, uh, dated today, uh, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, so we've actually changed the, the model of the, uh, of the uh, fixture of the string light, uh, compared to the plans that, that were submitted. Um, and we did an analysis of the light levels with just the string lights, um, and they provide a very nice uniform, uh, illumination across the pedestrian area. Um, that will be supplemented by the building mounted lighting. Um, all of the crosswalks, uh, will have, um, adequate lighting. We go back to the original plan. Um. And again, that's from, mostly from the, the street lighting. Um, the string lights will be mounted, um, on the buildings and on posts wherever there, uh, isn't a, a building on that side. Uh, they'll be mounted thirteen feet high. Um, and the spacing will be approximately every twenty feet in a zigzag pattern. And I believe the fixtures are spaced every, uh, two feet or so. And, um, that pretty much concludes, uh, my presentation. One thing I, I, you can, you can kind of see on this plan, which, um, is, is a little more closely detailed than some of the other plans, but this is a nice overall view. Um, we've adjusted some of the loading zones, um, that were proposed in some of the original, um, site plans just to uh, accommodate the, the wider crosswalks, um. And, you know, with the kind of patchwork nature of all of these different applications over time, um, we've taken this opportunity to, um, fix some conflicts with those loading zones and, um, and cite them, um, you know, close to, to where they're needed. Um, and again, those loading zones will be, um, um, subject to city council approval. Um, and that concludes my presentation. Um, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Uh, I have no questions. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Go ahead, doctor.
Um, I, I'm thinking about speed breakers on Vine, Vine Ripon and protested before the crossings.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that, Dr. Desai?
Uh, speed breakers on the street, um, in the, in the streets.
Like, uh, speed bumps?
Yeah.
Uh, we are not proposing any, um. So the, the speed table itself, um, kind of acts like a, a speed bump, um, in that this is, this, um, crosswalk area here is, is flush with the, the sidewalk. And then this, uh, this little ramp here, um, is, you know, makes up that six inch difference, um. So you would, you would have to slow down here, um, to navigate this safely.
So that essentially, Chris, that, that, uh, speed table is a large speed bump, if you will.
Correct.
And, and the other question is, uh, you know, this is a walk where people be, will be walking at night also. So how about cameras on the buildings?
I I cannot speak to that, but Chuck, maybe.
Yeah, I I I don't recall, uh. You know, specifically if they have, um. They have cameras, but I'm I'm sure they will have security measures in place, and I believe that most of, I I think every building um, that has been approved has has more than a hundred units, so you would be required to have a doorman. So you're gonna have eyes, eyes on on the the corridor here, uh, the pedestrian walkway. I I I know all of, all of my clients, actually, I was just corrected by text. All of my clients' buildings will have cameras on them.
Well.
All right, thank you, doctor. Anybody else? Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Okay, that that's it. Um, we don't have anything further.
All right, thank you, counsel. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, Mr. Chairman, I motion to close the public session.
Back there.
All right, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, um, I appreciate uh, Mr. Harrington coming tonight and before the board. Um. For the most part, uh, a lot of things were accomplished uh, by putting this plan together, especially pedestrian uh. Improvements for the Homestead Place extension. Um, I would ask that, uh, Mr. Collins, can you please bring back up the lighting plan? I did have a question.
Sure. Do you wanna see the the string light detail plan or the?
The ones with the wall-mounted lights. I must have missed this in my review, looking through. Is there a particular reason for the excess amount of lighting? On eleven to twenty-nine Cottage, the building? It seems pretty uniform throughout, and then we're dealing with a lot smaller.
So we're, we're not, um, so I I don't think that this property is part of this application, but we we modeled the lights that were shown on the approved site plan. Um, so, so we didn't. Design this, um, but, um. Chuck, do you wanna?
Well, I I.
clarify that.
Yeah, that that twenty-one, twenty-nine Cottage is is not part of the application, um. Because this, this involves the rest of it, so that they have a small little sliver there in front. Um, so the lighting plan, actually, Tim, to your question, you know, I guess that's something, maybe we we gotta further, you know, would further review and develop with you. Um, that's not a material.
I would think, because I would hope that the lighting would be uniform throughout the uh. The extension, no matter who the property owners are.
Yeah, so the concept is to have, it's always been discussed among, you know, the stakeholders and and the uh, the community to to have those string lights. I think it it really creates kind of. You know, a nice environment, but uh, that is, it's not one of the surface materials on on, you know, on the ground, and that's, that's really the purpose of of this application, so. Um, that we'd agree to, you know, further review that um, w- with planning.
Okay.
All right, anything else, Tim?
Um, no, um. Just that, um, when uh, the the condition uh, be placed upon this application that, um. Mr. Harrington will come back before this board, uh, when uh, appropriate architectural drawings are put together. That uh, go over the rest of the finalization of the Homestead Place extension. Um. And at that point, other developers can also be in on the process.
And that is our intent. So that would be acceptable.
All right, thank you, counsel. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Case P two, two dash two, one, two is presented to the board this evening with staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice, acting vice chair, Commissioner Gangen.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, this project's only being built a few blocks from me. I love to see it get lit up, and I can't wait that, to see it in its completion. And I think if there's any uh, attorney that, uh, we should grant any courtesy post ten o'clock hour, it would be the esteemed Chuck Harrington. I vote aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
All in favor, motion passes with staff conditions.
Okay, and thank you very much for indulging me here on this application. I appreciate it.
No worries, counsel. Thank you, we appreciate it. Let's get it done.
Mr. Collins.
Um. All right, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Chair, I have two resolutions. I'd like to make a motion to to memorize these two resolutions. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant one hundred Water Street. Phase two LLC for amendment on the merry and final major site. Plan approval for phase two block. Two zero seven zero four lots one and two block. Two zero seven zero one lots four and five. One fifty-one Yale Avenue, also known as one thirty-five Yale Avenue. One sixty-five Yale Avenue, six five zero Route four forty and Route four. Forty case, which is case number P two, two dash two, one, seven. Second resolution. Resolution of the Planning Board for the City of Jersey City, approving an amendment to the preliminary and final major site plan. With deviations and conditions, applicant Park Hall Lee. LLC for amendments to the preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviations. Property address is one thirty-six Summit Avenue, block. One five three zero five lots six point zero one and six point zero two. Case number is P two, two dash zero eight zero.
All right, thanks, Bridget. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Acting Vice Chair Gangen.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor to memorialize resolutions.
All right, thank you. Do we need an executive session, Santo? Anybody?
I do not, Chairman.
All right, thank you guys. I'll entertain a motion.
To.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Yes!
Thank you, guys.